Good evening, everyone. I call for order today, November 21st, 2023 at 6:00 PM. Please join me to the pleasure legends.
Let the leaders to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Robo Cole, Madam Burke.
Supervisor Aliaga.
Here.
Clerk Newbeck here, Treasurer Brown.
Here.
Trustee Morocco.
Here.
Trustee Alamothu, here. Trustee Ritchie.
Here.
And our newcomer trustee Tetter.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Great, please, I need a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. All right. Board and public announcements? Anyone from the board that would like?
Township is seeking applications for the senior center advisory committee. The mission of the committee is to invite adults ages 50 and older to participate in services and programs that promote wellness, independence, safety, and enrichment. Applications can be found on our website or at the clerk's office here at Town Hall. That's all I have.
Anyone else?
Anyone.
Yes, Christina Alamato.
I would just like to congratulate the Everest Collegiate High School Girls Volleyball Team, Division Four. They won the state championships on Saturday.
Hmm.
So, congrats to our school.
Great job.
Also, I want to congratulate Clarkston High School because they did make it to the Final Four. They just happened to lose before the finals, but it was pretty neat going out there and seeing two schools from Clarkston made it to the Final Four at least. Yeah.
Of course. Very nice.
Congrats to the girls.
Absolutely. Treasurer Brown.
Well, just to assist Terry. Everest was down 0-2 in the semifinals and won it, and they were down 0-2 in the finals and won it. And as everybody knows, you've got to win three out of five. So, it wasn't just great. It was unbelievable to come back twice like that in the semis and finals. Amazing.
In the third set, you have to, it's only up to 15 instead of 25. They were down 10 to 3 in that final set even, so.
Amazing.
Yeah. Great comeback.
Impressive. Very impressive. Anyone else? You're okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Public comments? Anyone for the audience? Please. State your name and address.
No problem.
Yes, Joette Kones, 9740 Reese Road, Clarkston. I wanted to publicly thank Dave McKee, the DPW director, and tell you a little bit about what's happening at the cemetery that you manage, Lakeview Cemetery on White Lake Road. We are, Reese Across America is a national program. For many years, I've been out at Great Lakes putting wreaths on. But the more I had worked at Lakeview, I realized that we had a lot of veterans there. Some killed in action, every war, from the Revolutionary War to the Afghanistan War. And Carol at the cemetery office told me we had 1,142 veterans buried at Lakeview. That's 12%. That's a huge number because in a community, you only have 6%, 7% these days. So, over the years, many of the World War II veterans have been buried at Lakeview because Great Lakes wasn't open until 2004. So, we are going to have, I asked Dave if we could have Reese Across America, which really means people buy a wreath for $17 and we place it on a veteran's grave. It could be, I think Mr. Casson, he's placing it on his son's grave that died in Afghanistan. But it could be somebody else placing it on any other veteran's grave, and that's what Carol has given us. So, you know, this is a start. We didn't start until October late because people, people said, "Oh, you can do it." But, you know, I didn't know whether I could or not. But we have 125 wreaths today, so that's about 10%. I've got, I put a sheet up by you. You can buy a wreath for Arlington National Cemetery, Great Lakes National Cemetery, or Lakeville, Lakeview Cemetery. And we have to have that, we have to have the money for that by next, or Wednesday, the 28th. But we're going to have a small ceremony on the 16th, which is National Wreaths Across America Day, and they honor, let me think if I can do this, Army, Navy, Marines, Air Force, Space Force, Merchant Marines, POWs, and one more. I'm so sorry, I'm like.
Postcard.
Merchant Marines.
Oh.
And so, what it says here is, remember, honor, and teach. Remember the fallen, honor those that have served and their families, and teach the next generation about freedom. So, if, I'm just trying to share the information, and thank you so much for letting it do it at Lakeview. And thanks to Dave McKee.
Thank you, Joette. Thank you, Joette. Very nice.
I have one quick question for you.
Sure.
That poster you brought, is that, is that in a PDF or something you can share on our emails so we can share that?
Yeah, I'll share it with you.
Thank you.
I mean, may I have this one back?
Okay. Thank you.
Joette, can we also keep that and put it in the lobby for the week?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll just, I'll just leave it right here.
I'll grab it.
It'll be on TV later. Yeah, yeah. There's a QR right there.
And Joette, I did what Christine Alamato says, it's a very idea if you can email it. I mean, I think most of us would like to get the flyer, I believe, right?
Okay.
If you, yeah. Oh, okay. No, by PDF. So, we can, I would like, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would like to chat on Facebook, social media as well. It's a good idea, Terry.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Anyone else? Anyone from online that would like to address to the board? Moving on. We don't have a public hearing. We don't have presentations on report. We're going for the consent agenda today. We have a request to approve the Board of Trustees' regular meeting minutes of November 7, 2023. Request to approve the November 14, 2023 check run, including the ACH of $632,884, and ratified on November 9, 2023 payroll, $312,105 and 9 cents. I need a motion to approve.
There's one more.
Oh, one more? Oh. Okay. Thanks, Carrie.
Sure.
I have two here.
I only have two.
Two. I just have two.
There's only two on the agenda, so.
Oh, okay. All right, here. 2022 payroll, $312,105,099. That's what you said?
Oh, the 315s? All right, never mind.
Okay, we're good.
That must be an error in my paper.
Okay.
Okay. Sorry about that.
It's okay. Please, I need a motion to approve that consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. All right. Regular business. We have the, we have the request to approve the four-day work week. All right. Nancy, please.
Hello.
Hello.
Came to the board before and we presented the information about the four-day work week in this format, so we wanted to come back for the resolution and just give you an update, sort of in the same format. The information that I'm going to share with you tonight has been provided by, gathered and provided by the township, and I've just consolidated it to share with you related to next step. So, just to recap, we implemented the four-day work week. The hours were adjusted so that the township's operating hours are 7:00 AM to 5:30 PM on Monday through Thursdays. And we were looking at potential benefits that were going to include, you know, resident and contractor early access to services, extended access to service, attraction and retention of high-quality employees, and then engaged township employees. We also said, you know, there are other communities that are engaging in a four-day work week, and we provided these examples. So, this is just a recap from where we were when we started off. We talked about operational considerations and that the directors have now reported that they have seen no operational adverse impact, and they continue to make their decisions about how to run their shops in the same way. So, that would apply to scheduling, folks requesting time off, overtime, standby assignments, and callback. There have been no adverse changes to the operations as reported by our directors. So, we promised to bring back some deliverables. And so, as related to customer interactions before 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM, we were able to grab some metrics to share. In the clerk's office, they have seen that RFP responses, those are now coming in prior to 8:00 AM, so they've gathered them before the date. They're not seeing them after 5:00. Within the building department, they paid attention to the calls that were coming in, and they looked at calls between 7:00 AM and 8:00 PM, excuse me, between 7:00 AM and 8:00 AM. So, now they are starting to see about six to seven calls coming in between that time and four or five calls coming in after. So, they are seeing people use these extended hours, absolutely. Foot traffic is also something that they paid attention to, and they are seeing foot traffic in the morning before 8:00 AM and then also between 5:00 and 5:30. In the treasurer's office, we were able to actually have some information to review that was gathered, and so the treasurer's office found that 22% of the posting transactions are occurring between 7:00 AM and 8:00 AM. So, we're absolutely seeing an adoption of the use of that time and being able to be efficient with it. They've also seen a month-over-month increase in foot traffic, and that is also speaking to people acclimating to the four-day work week and the extended hours. And as you can see on the grid in front of you, just as a short example, July, August, and September, they have seen steady increases in how many foot traffics that are coming through. And so, we take that as a sign that it's being adopted and handled well. Mr. Treasurer.
I just want to point out that the data there, I took directly from cash receiving, which showed actual transactions happening, and so that's where I, that's where I came up from. I just want to make sure the board understood that.
Yeah, great point. That is not anecdotal information. That's hard-had quantity.
It's 22% of all the transactions we posted for the entire period between July and November, for all our business. 22% is being done between 7:00 and 8:00. I included that from, from a productivity standpoint, because I see the employees in here, they're getting stuff done early, and they seem to be excited to do it because we're doing nearly a quarter of our, our work for the day in that first hour.
And they're working through the end to the 5:30 as we saw that there is at least 1% of those transactions were handled within that time, too. As far as more information about acclamation, we looked at voicemails. How many are coming in? How many are responding to on Monday because we missed the call on Friday? And what we've seen as people have gotten used to it, that has decreased. When they used to have about 20 calls that they'd respond to that had come in that day, now they're getting maybe three or four. One of the important deliverables we promised to talk to you about are operational expenses. We have seen decreases in time off requests because folks have four days, so they're not asking to have that additional time, so they are performing and they're available during those accessible hours. We have not seen any increase across the departments in overtime cost. We looked at this from the budget side, the finance side, and individual directors as well, and they were all very confident that there have been no increases in those overtime costs because folks weren't out here on Fridays. Within DPW, they were also able to provide some solid quantitative information. They looked at how much money was spent with DTE during the same month, during 2022 months as, during this, this period, and they saw an $1,800 reduction in what we're spending to DTE and 760 gallons of fuel that are not used since that time comparable to 2022 over the same time span. As far as complaints, that was really important. How are people going to adapt to this? Overall, anecdotally, the, the customer feedback has been very, very positive. There have been some complaints, and each one of those has been addressed, whether it's been a resident through a telephone call, an email, or a sit-down face-to-face with those residents. We've also had employees that have raised some concerns. In that instance, those individual employees have been met with, and in one instance where the employee talked about the difficulty or their dislike of the four-day work week, the township was willing to work with them and say, "All right, where you're at, it could be a five-day operational. We could, we could change that." And when the opportunity was provided to switch back to the five-day to make it better for that employee, they said, "No, no, I don't want to switch. I just want you to know I don't like it." So, the township has responded to those types of requests and tried to find solutions. We also had some concerns with the union, and they were more towards clarifying parts of the LOU and how that practically got implemented. And so, we had a special conference with the union, and it came out to be, worked out really, really well. What we did was we ended up developing two different LOUs that amended and clarified how PTO was used, how it could be requested, so that folks didn't feel like they were being short-changed. So, without giving any additional benefits or taking any away, we were able to reach that agreement. One of the other concerns they had was related to holidays. How are we going to structure? As you recall, we'd structured some changes to the observation dates for certain holidays. They wanted to know how that was going to play out in the future for planning purposes. And one of the things that they expressed that was really important to them was, you know, is this going to be happening? Is this going to continue? We need to know because time off requests are due, and some of those union contracts require them to get in, and they're based on first-come, first-served. So, folks really want to understand, what are we, what are they going to do so they can plan their lives around it and, and keep moving with this? So, we did have that special meeting. And then, just to mention, of course, IAF department, that's our firefighters, this really doesn't apply to them as they're on 24-hour shifts, and then their 40-hours employees are already using this. So, as far as the, you know, the IAF members. So, the labor relations piece has gone pretty well. It's our understanding that the union is looking at those LOUs, and they want to get full consensus of their membership, and then they'll be signing those in the near future is what our understanding is at this point. So, overall, the, the discussion has been very, very positive. The feedback has been very positive, and we would like to provide some consistency to the employees for planning purposes and then to finalize things with our unions. And so, I believe that the opportunity for the board is to, you know, ask any questions and decide the next steps. Can I answer any questions for you?
Yeah. Okay, sure.
I have one. So, with the people not requesting time off because it's not needed, is their PTO just being in this huge bank, and at the end, we're just going to have a huge fund to have to pay them their unused hours now?
Well, there are caps on the PTO and the rollover based on, that are already built in, and that is something that we are looking at for the township-wide, just saying, well, how can we make sure that time off is available and accessible without those legacy costs? And so, that might be a part two of adjusting some benefit structures for our non-represented employees that hasn't been finalized. But as it stands now, those caps as to what you could be paid out, they're already in place, so.
Good question. Yeah. Good question, Terry.
I have a question.
Sure. Trustee Morocco.
How did we land on the Friday observance? I know it was the week of the 21st for, you know, as of this year, and then it said in the contract, if we go, if we extend this program, how are the Fridays working out?
As far as the holidays?
Mm-hmm.
So, it was, again, it would be the same thing to look at and say, "Okay, which holidays fall on Friday?" And then, where can we make sense in consolidating those so that folks don't lose any time and it makes sense for the township operationally? As it looks for the next couple of years, it would be a similar situation to what is here. Sometime either around either the Christmas week or the New Year's week is when it would be a full closure so that they could be consolidated again, just as they were this year.
And do we get to negotiate that with the union of when we want that? So, it's not a random observance in September or, you know, where we're shorting another week? Like, around the Christmas makes sense because that's going to be a real slow period.
Yeah, all of the holidays that have been reassigned, suggested for reassignment, will land on that Christmas or New Year's week so that we're not disrupting operations any more than the four-day work week as it is now.
Okay. Thank you. Trustee Jim Tetter.
Thank you. Have, in, in general, what have been some of the, I know you, you spoke in generalities, but what have been some of the specific complaints from residents, if there were any of significance?
So, I, I could have the, some of the board members or folks chime in, but one of the initial concerns was, there was some confusion about going to a four-day work week and whether that would reduce the number of hours employees actually worked. You know, you heard a lot in the, in the, in the media about the 32-hour work week and things like that. That was never the case at all. It's always been 40 hours. So, that was one of the big complaints, and then that required some clarification, and then people understood, "Okay, we're not cutting their hours. We're just consolidating it into four days instead of five." And that, that seemed to, to address things. The internal complaints were more confusion related to, "How am I going to use my PTO time? It says I can only use a half-day, but that's four hours, and so how are we going to practically apply that?" And then, again, the most recent ones have been, "What are you guys going to do so that we can plan our lives because we've got to get our time off requested?" The board members might have some other specific examples. I know Paul, excuse me, I know the treasurer has, has met with anyone that has complained.
Yep. Jim, I just went out, I related with what Nancy says. When we approved it as a pilot, that is right. The first couple of complaints I got in the streets, a few people, was about that. They said that we're cutting eight hours because what they watched in some other, our states, some cities actually went down from 40 hours to 32 hours. That never was some intention. We still work in 40 hours a week. And I explained that it's 10 hours per day, Monday to Thursday, so it's 40 hours a week. And when I explained that, "Oh, okay, Jose, I saw that you guys went to 32 hours and you guys cutting one day of services for us." No, we're not. And when they find out that we open at 7:00, they say, "Oh, I know that because before I go to work, I can stop by and get something done." So, they actually didn't understand, and we put, we explained that in the Independence Times and on Clarkston News, and we put more in detail what, what intend this pilot idea. And then, you know, that complaint dropped significantly because most of that complaint that I got was when I went to church or I went to other places shopping, and people asked me that. Now, no.
Yeah, and I, I don't sense that the complaints are widespread, at least. You know, I've followed this, you know, through the recorded meetings and such, and it, you know, it seems it's gone well to this point. I know, you know, we have faith in our directors that they're going to, and that their employees are going to work in harmony with, with the adjusted schedule. And, you know, as I mentioned when I was interviewing for this post, I think we're in a, really a new, a new way of looking at employment, and I, I think there are a lot of positive benefits when we, as a board, can support a more family-friendly approach. So, I, I would, I would suggest, you know, as we, as this fleshes out and we, we kind of massage our way through some of the hiccups, that we remain open to perhaps other ideas because maybe as things go on, you know, employees might say, "Well, what about we, we have a Monday-through-Friday option, but that we're very heavy, we're, you know, a 5-3-3-5 option? I don't, I'm just throwing." There's a lot of different scenarios out there, and I know township employees uniquely, their jobs aren't easily performed at home, right? They're, they need to be here to perform set duty, so it's a little unique to some other work environments and, you know, and it, and a competitive working world in attracting top talent. I think so long as there's a consensus that this is work to the, to date, you know, I think it's a great thing to move forward with.
To the trustee's point, one of the reports that came back from the Human Resources Department was that the four-day work week was definitely an impetus for some of the recent hires that found that a very attractive benefit, and that there's also been conversation among some employees about whether this happens or not, and it's not, you know, just intended just to share the information with you, but if the four-day work week goes away, I don't know if this is a place that I want to stay because they, some folks have gotten used to it and they really, really like it. Now, whether they leave or not, that's, that's different, but they have made those statements. So, to your point, that retention has been very helpful and also in attracting is one of the ways to pull people in.
Yeah, and then, so, I remember talking with some individuals, says, "Jose, we don't do that in the private sector," and I understand the point, but also, well, some other groups in the private sector started doing that actually now. I see it now. But we are competing with other townships, and you see, I know competing with GM and Ford, you know, they're not going to come here and hire a good DPW director or a good fire chief director, you know? I compete with other townships, then sometimes they offer better benefits, sometimes they offer better salaries, and but when we did this, we didn't raise taxes or we didn't increase or overspend anything. It was something that allowed us for retention, something allowed us also to hire good, good people, A students. And that, that's a tool that's helping not just Independence Court, it helps Nancy Rowell, Lisa, several other townships they inhabit and allow them to retain and capture more employees.
Right.
So, yeah. I just want to, Treasurer Brown.
So, at the treasurer's office, I have a sign of, you know, that talks about the hours, and a lot of folks who come in to pay their bills, they really don't know about it, and they see the sign, then they'll ask about it. And so, if I'm standing there, I, you know, I, I talk to them about it, but you really get two kinds of things coming from them. I'll either hear them say to my, my staff, or they'll say it to me, usually to my staff, "How do you like the, you know, the, the four-day work week?" Or, "How do you like a three-day weekend?" Right? Hey, the employees tell them how much they like it, and everything's great. Or they'll say, "Must be, how do you like the four-day, the three-day weekend? It must be nice." Well, that's somebody I usually would go up and say, "That's," you know, and see if they want to chat about it. And when you explain to them the intent, which is to try and have a good benefit for the employees that doesn't cost the taxpayers any additional money, and, and again, sort of explain to them the reason that we wanted to do this and the hard time hiring people right now, and I think I, I don't recall any leaving still feeling like it was, you know, a bad idea. I had one lady that came in on a Monday to pay her bill, and she said, "Well, I came in Friday and no one was here," and, and I, you know, I said, "Well, I'm, you know, I'm sorry that happened." She said, "Well, it's not really your fault. I came in the prior Friday, too, but I forgot." So, she came in two Fridays in a row and forgot. Finally, on Monday, she's, she's got used to it. But the data that I looked up that shows that, that trend line showing people using these earlier hours, I think that's solid, and I, and I could probably say that six Fridays out of the, out of the four months, I've been here on a Friday at some point about six times, and probably, and it ran into somebody who was pulling in to do business, and I would try to chat with them when they were here. If they had a check, I'd take their check and run it in for them, but none of them felt frustrated by it or angry. They just said, "Yeah, I, I, you know, I forgot," or "I didn't know. It's fine. I'll come on Monday." And I'd let them know I open at 7:00. So, very little i- in the way of folks really taking a negative position is what I've seen from the treasurer's office.
Anyone else? Carrie?
I just wanted to follow up and say, mostly for Jim's information, we did create an email address that residents could email in negative or positive comments, and last I checked with the supervisor's office, there was one email that came initially quite, quite a ways back, and there was some back and forth with that person, and at the, in the end, that person was satisfied with the result. And at the end, in the end, that, that person was satisfied with the results. I did receive one phone call from a resident who was upset in the beginning. And once I explained the mechanics and how we were operating, they actually said they were retiree and, uh, they used to work for a school district. And she said, you know, that's funny that you tell me that now. And she was reflecting back when they tried something like that where they did like a Monday and a Friday off. And it didn't work because of schedules and things that happened. And so they actually had tried it themselves. So she was happy to hear the extended hours and that we were actually offering more time, but just within a, within a shorter week. So she was pleased with that. And I did hear today, which I was surprised that there's one employee that had stated, if we were to go back, which this isn't something that pertains to me necessarily in this time of my life, but they said if we were to go back to the five days a week, they would have to reconsider their employment because it would cost them another three hundred dollars a day for daycare. And they would have to reevaluate their, um, employment here because it would be more expensive for them to go back to the five-day work week. So I just thought I'd put that out there. It was something I was surprised about.
Trustee Alamato? I'm sorry.
Are you, are you done with that topic of the complaints? I don't want to cut in front of anybody because I have a different question about it. The, the one thing I was thinking about is, is the timing that we started this. And we haven't seen, is I know that Parks and Rec in the fall, in the spring, when they have their big signup times for their sports and baseball, I, I just want to make sure that that department, it's aware to people. Because I remember, you know, when my kids played, there was lines out the door all the time to make sure you signed up for that baseball team before they sold out or filled out, rather. And, uh, so as they're creating forms for these registrations, that it's, it's on there. So that was my biggest thing is I think that's more March, April. And we didn't go through that yet with this. And my fear is just getting the word out there ahead of time for all those parents that are going to be coming to Parks and Rec for the summer sports.
That's just more impetus to get the word out ahead of time or make adjustments during those heavy times?
Yeah, we can, we can do that. Treasure Brown.
So I do recall my first few years here, that when it was time to register, people would be lined up, up, all the way up the stairs into the upstairs lobby to come down into this room to do their registration. I haven't seen that in years because so much depends online now. And the Parks Department's just starting up and my office has been participating. They've kind of kept us involved. And a new, um, program to do the registrations is going to be even better.
Okay, great.
So.
Yes, trustee Morocco.
I just want to touch on Carrie's point about the daycare. Um, all through this process, I've been talking to employees about how they like it. Talked to many directors, many, many times over the six months and how they're doing it. There was a couple of things that were brought to my attention and those things were addressed immediately that were related to a Friday business. But to Carrie's point about daycare, other things that, uh, the employees had mentioned was that their savings in fuel cost, um, not going to lunch one day a week out. You know, people don't bring lunch, um, their daycare. So the, um, uh, what do you say, the, you know, so the, the balance of their income, you know, there's significant savings, uh, which, um, so not only the four days. I feel like we're, you know, we are giving the employees, if we go forward, this a lot of benefits, you know? The four, who wouldn't want to work four days instead of five? And there's saving also additional financial benefits to them. So I think that, um, we're getting, we, we should be, with this program, we would be edging closer and closer to being one of the more desirable, um, townships toward for, you know, ideally is the goal. So, um, I think that it works towards that, you know? And, uh, the morale in the township, uh, fluctuates. I only see a snapshot of it. Although people think I'm here all the time, I'm not here all, I don't talk to everybody all the time. But, um, uh, I think the stability of it is, is important too. We got to pick a way of going and we got to stick with it because everyone's life's affected by those schedules. Um, and, uh, I know that, uh, happy employees, uh, work better, so. Um, they're just, I made the same comment when we went to try it. There just isn't enough evidence to show why it wouldn't be beneficial, you know, what, that, that, uh, would outweigh the benefits of it. So it's hard to make a decision against it when the positives certainly outweigh the negatives, in my opinion. So that's all I got to say.
Thank you. And something else to add is that productivity has been going up. A lot of things are getting done. And personally, I work with a lot of, of the directors directly. They report to me. And we have great directors, great people, good employees. I enjoy working with them every day and I think this four-day work week, which by the way, I see it when I Google it, I see a lot of reports of universities, their statistics and investigations. It says they reduce stress, improve productivity. And those, those things are very important to me because productivity is, we get the job done and keep good services. And again, we still working forty hours a week. We didn't reduce any hours or anything. We provide the same services. Actually, we improved services, so. And the cost, you see, we have some saving in energies, we have some saving. And I think this is a good theme and I'm, uh, actually ready to ask for a motion. If you don't mind me, if anyone would like to make.
I'll move to approve resolution number twenty twenty-three dash zero two-one to adopt a four-day work week as presented.
No support.
Well, they have a rubber calls.
Clerk Newbeck, yes. Treasurer Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Morocco?
Yes.
Trustee Alamato?
Yes.
Trustee Ritchie?
Yes.
Trustee Tetter?
Yes.
And Supervisor Aliaga?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Thanks very much, Nancy.
Thank you, Nancy.
Absolutely. All your help on this.
Yes, thank you for your helpness.
Tremendous.
Appreciate that.
Thanks for bringing the deliverables because before, uh, you guys sent that. I was planning on voting no tonight, so, since you didn't have the deliverables with that, so.
Okay.
Same here, so that was good that we got that out.
All right, thank you. Thank you for your honesty. All right. Chief Pichet, if you don't mind, please, if you can, come to the podium. Good evening, chief.
Good evening. Um, Fire Department, as you know, uh, we have the MERS plan and we budgeted for 2023 a transfer from our operating budget of two hundred thousand dollars to pay down our unfunded liability, which you can see is at five point two million dollars. So just here to request that approval, to make that payment and that transfer.
Okay, all right. Any questions for board members? No? So, okay.
Just a comment, I guess, uh, you know, the five point two million, if, if we pay it down at two hundred thousand a year, it's only going to take twenty-six more years to, to beat that down, so.
Yes, the simple math would be yes. But we are, uh, as we move forward, we are paying more as we go into next year. And we're actually following a plan that MERS provided us on how to pay down the plan in approximately ten years. So we're following their plan. So the, next year, when I come to the board, it will be a larger amount. And then we're actually trying to add more to that to even buy it down even further. So, um, ten years-ish, could be down to seven, eight years, depending on how we make those progressive payments.
Okay.
So there is a plan.
And I, I knew there was. I just, I just wanted to, I guess for the public's benefit to, to understand. It's a, it's a big number.
Yep.
You know, we are, we have had, spent many hours, you know, figuring out how to attack it and everything as well, so.
Yep.
So I just want to make sure that, you know, that's part of your budgeting process and we talk about that.
Yeah, absolutely.
To make sure the public knows we're taking care of our, our debt.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Thanks. Okay, if nobody else would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'll move to approve the transfer of two hundred thousand dollars from the fire operating budget to municipal employees retirement system of Michigan located at one-one-three-four Municipal Way in Lansing, Michigan, four-eight-nine-one-seven.
No support. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, chief.
Great, thank you. Appreciate it.
Dave, they, or, next we have our DPW director, Dave McKee. Please, Dave, come to the podium.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, first off, I just want to, before she goes, I want to thank Joette for the kind words. I really appreciate it, you know, as a veteran myself, really don't care when we're alive about the pomp and circumstances. But it, I think it's ultra-important, ultra-important to remember ones that aren't with us anymore. So to me, that's more, that's more important than getting anything, but, you know, I really appreciate it. So thank you very much. Um, tonight, we are here, me and Chief Pichet are here to, uh, seek board approval for some, uh, interior renovations at the Department of Public Works and at fire station number one. Most of the board members here, you recall, we came here a few years ago. We were going to go on it a different route. We got direction from the board that we needed to do, uh, essentially in my position. For me, a better job, and I wanted to do it the way it was directed that we were directed to do. I believe we have done that. We have accomplished that. Just a little bit of background on there for Jim, for, uh, or trustee Tetter, for, um, your benefit too, is that we did go, um, and we seeked an architectural firm to design the building or renovations for both of us. We also had board approval to hire a construction manager to do the project for us. Benefit of that is they contract, they bid out all the trades and everything. Saves us from doing that and they worked through the clerk's department to do that to make sure that all the things fell in line with the, um, processes that we have in place for our procurement policy. And I believe everything was, uh, under, um, Clerk Newbeck's direction was, was, uh, done properly. So today, we're here, we do have a couple of things we can show you on the screen right here. We'll just kind of show you a layout really quick of what we, what we have come up with. While I'm getting this teed up, I did like to say that, you know, the Public Works building, a lot of you have been over there, you know that the administration part of the DPW building is less than stellar. Now, we've definitely got our money's worth out, worth out of it, so I'm, uh, no doubt about that. So I'll start off with Public Works, if I can, let me see if I can make this better, a little bit bigger so we can kind of see here. So this is the floor plan. I apologize, all the little red, or I'm sorry, like there's the yellow little boxes are, uh, little comment boxes and things. So if you know what it really looks like now, then you can see that this is a drastic difference. The biggest problem that we had is that employees didn't have a place of their own. You know, there's twenty people that work at Department of Public Works. And I had three, four guys working at one desk, one computer, no place to call theirs own. And it's very tough to accommodate that. So, you know, we did the best we could for a long time, but, uh, you know, we decided it was best as we move on and, uh, and we can, uh, improve the, uh, working conditions, the office working conditions, not only for the field staff for sure, but also for the office staff as well. So this is what the, uh, Department of Public Works, uh, the final drawings have came up with. Uh, just a couple highlights and notes of what's going on. So up here, if you look up here in this here, this is a, a conference room or a, a training facility that we have put in there. The nice thing about that is heaven forbid anything happens here. Um, you know, that's an alternate spot where board meetings can be held, right there. Because it'll be connected to the network, everything will be set up that way. But it's also a fine little training room for, um, seminars and training that we can host here at DPW uh, for, you know, other departments if need be, you know? And that's, that's a wonderful thing. There's going to be AV equipment in there. And, um, I think it's going to be a, a nice addition to our facility because it's one thing we've never really had. Women's facility is right here. That is all new ADA compliant. Um, there is a small locker room in there as well. And this is the men's room right here. This great off area is the new addition that we put on a couple of years ago. We are bumping out into there a little bit so we can put a locker room in there for the men's staff. And the restroom facilities have been improved dramatically from what is currently there. Without too much detail, it's much better. There's more room, to put it, to put it bluntly. Uh, in the area over here, there is a, uh, kind of like I call the, I'm probably going to end up calling this the bullpen because it's just kind of where the staff will work and they will have their own areas of where they can, um, they have their own private Idaho, I guess. It's a workstations there for everyone that they can, um, keep their paperwork and, uh, do their business, conduct their business township-wide. An area over here, this is going to be part of the, um, computer. Skate equipment will be along the wall right here with our security monitoring systems. Also, right here, there'll be a, a large table here to put out blueprints if we need to. And a copy machine, plotting machine will be also in there. We have an enclosed office right here for staff members. This is the director's office. I'm kind of essentially moving up to the front office here in the corner, which originally was the DPW director's office years ago when I think George Anderson built the building. So I'm kind of just going back to going home. Then in the area right here is the front office where we come in here. One thing that we did do at DPW is we did, I did consult with the Sheriff's Department about, um, how we could keep things safe and secure. And, um, they gave some great suggestions, so we've implemented in those. And essentially, if you've been over there, there's this curved wall right here. This is going to be clear glass now. And the door right here will have a buzzer that the staff can buzz to let staff, let somebody come in here. The front counter will be here right now. And the front office staff will have lots of space each one, and, uh, right on here so they can see who's coming in, um, and buzz them in the door. They can come in and take care of business here at the table. We have another small office right here. I think this is where Mr. Ziegler will be here, our safety and coordinating officer. And then we do have a lunchroom right over in here. So this is kind of just the, uh, you know, the overview of the floor plan that we have, um, that we've done there. Chief Pichet, we do have fire station. Chief can kind of go over that a little bit. I do want to point out that, uh, through this whole process, this, our budgets for both of these projects came in under what was estimated to be, which is a wonderful thing. Uh, we do have a representative here from ARC here and, uh, who helped us tremendously with that. Where's he at? There he is. It's Aaron right there. Um, very, very, very helpful on there. So Chief Uja, did you want to kind of go over your things here? Let me tee that up for you, so.
He can increase it probably because he's got some room to.
I can't see.
I can make it bigger.
Yeah. That's just, but that's not the, that's my half the building.
Oh, it's two pages.
Can you go to the first?
There's another page up there.
Let me make this smaller. Oh, you want to go? Okay. Start with that one?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
Okay. So I'm basically almost in the same position as DPW. Uh, the fire station served its purpose for the past twenty-five years. We're making, all our changes, our interior changes, has nothing to do with the foundation. We're not making the space larger. We're just simply remodeling from front to back and rearranging walls to provide better spaces for the current staff we have with also a forethought that in the future, there'll be room for growth to add firefighters to the building. The other big component of the building and actually all our fire stations is we need to get more, uh, forward thinking in terms of providing privacy for both male and female firefighters because they live there for twenty-four hours a day. They have bathrooms, showers, locker rooms and sleeping facilities that currently in fire station one are not private. Um, that's a thing that's gone in the past in the fire service. And it's, you know, incumbent on us to provide a space that's comfortable and private for both male and female employees. So this remodel, uh, addresses that, both with bathrooms, locker rooms and the bunk room. For instance, in the bunk room, uh, actually, how do you get back to the other pages, Dave?
Uh, very top, top tab.
Okay, the top page, uh, tab right here, right, my arrow is. We currently have four bunk rooms and they're not private. So anybody gets changed or so on and so forth, they don't have that privacy. Um, so moving forward, each, we've added two bunk rooms, so it's a total of six, which allows the fire department to grow in the future. And in addition, it provides the privacy, again, for both, uh, male and female firefighters to be able to go in, get dressed, undress, close their door and have that privacy. It's also the same way with bathrooms. We're providing, uh, two additional bathrooms here that are private, that provide a shower, uh, toilet and sink, again, so someone can go in there, both male or female, and have that privacy. So that's some of the big pieces we've done. While I'm back here in this section, this is currently our training room. Uh, the training room, as it exists today, takes in this entire space. We're going to steal a little bit of space from the training room to add the two additional bunk rooms. And additionally, based on how we operate today in the fire department, we don't need a training room that was quite as large as it currently is. So we're subdividing and providing an additional conference room for our firefighters to work on projects, have meetings, so on and so forth. So they'll, we're going from one conference room that we currently have in the department to two by simply subdividing the space and making better use of it. by simply subdividing the space and making better use of it. Going back down, this is our administrative offices. We currently don't have enough office space for each one of our fire department administration, which is our daytime staff, our forty-hour staff. So with the new layout, we're creating a couple additional offices, so each person has their own office, they're able to go in, do their work, close their door, so on and so forth. So, again, we're just sort of rearranging the current space so that it serves us better moving forward. Additionally, I think, if you remember, last time I was here, we were speaking to, this is a public entrance. To get from the parking lot down to this public entrance, you have to either go down a ramp or a set of stairs, which is not very safe and conducive to our more senior population, it's not a safe way to come in the building. So we are now gonna not, we're gonna change this, and our public entrance will now come up front here, and we're creating a couple parking spots to make it more convenient for the public when they wanna come in. And the other thought about that is, the administrative staff, obviously working four days a week and not there on the weekends, when the public would go to the back door, there's no one there to serve them, because we're not there. Now, by sending them up front here, they can come into this front vestibule, and this area here will have our firefighters, where they do their projects, work on computers, and there's a window here to serve the public, so they're not coming into a building and there's no one there to, to speak to them. So we're addressing all of that. Made a little bit of changes here, this is, again, this is what we call our dispatch office, where the firefighters on duty, do their reports, they work on projects, so on and so forth. And then we have a shift commander, his office is right here. In our current building, it's flip-flopped. The captain is over here in the large office, and the firemen are squeezed in the smaller office. So we're flipping that, because there's only one shift commander on a day, yet we have several firefighters, up to four or five firefighters, that could be using the space a little more comfortably. So we're making that flip-flop on that. We're enlarging the whole, again, this is the kitchen area, we're enlarging the kitchen area to provide more space. We have three shifts of firefighters, so each shift has their own pantry. Each shift of firefighters has their own refrigerator. So it just provides better space, a better layout, much more comfortable for the firefighters moving forward. And then another big remodel part is the men's locker room, we call it. And that's changing so that, again, when the firefighters go in there, they can take a shower, they can close off the door, have privacy. We currently don't have that, so when you go into men's bathroom now, there's literally no privacy when you're taking a shower, going to the bathroom, so on and so forth. Again, that's old-school thinking, and moving forward, this building kinda takes us moving much further into the future and providing all those safeguards that we should have in place for our employees. So, much more comfortable building, up to date. We're making changes to the heating and cooling system, that doesn't work properly. We're also doing, our sprinkler system doesn't work in the building, it's being addressed. So there's a lot of different items within the building that are being kinda brought back to code, brought back to where they should be working for the fire department in the community. And that's kinda the quick nutshell of what's going on. I'll answer any questions if you have it.
Thank you, chief. Any board members' comments, questions?
I got some.
Trustee Maraco.
You know, I toured that facility, which is very outdated. I was very surprised at how bad that facility was, and I commend the firefighters for sticking with us, to live there. Hopefully, lighting's gonna be one of the big things, because that's about the most dismal building I've ever been in. I wouldn't wanna be living in it for twenty-four hours, you know, so. I think you guys have done a great job, I went through the, you know, the bid process, being, that being my career. And I thought that a lot of the pricing was, you know, reasonable, I didn't break everything down, but I think you guys did a really good job of working with OCH to get this straight, and, and it looks like every, you know, it looks like a good deal, and it's long overdue. So I appreciate the effort that you two have put in to, to bring this to light.
Thank you.
So, I guess, to recap, um. Make sure I got the right one here. So as I mentioned, you know, we're, we're pretty pleased that, you know, the bids that came back in were, were under, what they were estimated to be, which was, which was great, which is really good feeling when we heard that from OCH. So also in the May, that we are requesting additional funding, because we do have to essentially outfit the buildings, you know, and includes furniture and some appliances and those things of nature. So we're seeking board approval tonight to get these projects moving forward. I do believe OCH wants to get going in early December, is that fair statement? Early December, and be out by April? May, okay.
Pretty aggressive.
They may be out by April, yeah.
There you go, thanks, Paul, I'll remember it. And, and it's, and it's a good timing, you know, I mean, there is some logistical things that we have to do. We're staying open for business, for customers and everything, so we have to, you know, we're gonna move out. DPW staff is essentially moving out, we're gonna move into the new garage, and we have to get some facilities set up in there for staff to work there, communications, everything to work there. Customers can come there still. We're gonna be open for business, you know, and, you know, we're gonna make it as seamless as possible. But there is additional funding that we are requesting in May tonight to take care of some of those. I don't wanna say ancillary. There you go, ancillary expenses and things.
Dave, a new word now.
Tell me a new word, look out, I'm gonna start using it. But we appreciate your support with this, we, Sam, it has been, you know, Fire One is at least twenty-five years old. I know Public Works is thirty-plus, I think that was built in eighty. So we're typically looking forty there, so, and it's, and it's time, so. And we appreciate your support on this.
Okay, well, I guess I, I believe I need a motion?
I'll move to accept bid proposals for interior facility improvements for the Independence Township Department of Public Works, the amount not to exceed one million, three hundred twenty-six thousand, eight hundred thirty-six dollars, with an extra zero in there. And Fire Station Number One, in an amount not to exceed one million, seven hundred thirty-nine thousand, five hundred forty-three dollars, as submitted by the George W. OCH Company, Pontiac, Michigan, pursuant to the Section 3.2 Competitive Sealed Bidding Procurement Procedures for the Township Procurement Petty Cash Credit Card Policy and direct supervisor to sign the proposal as the authorized representative of the township.
Second.
Okay, motion have made, and second, others in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry. Motion B, Rob?
Move to approve the additional project funding of fifty thousand dollars for the public, our Department of Public Works for mobile office solutions, appliances and technology services, and eighty thousand dollars for the fire department for appliances and technology services required for the project completion.
Second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I move to accept the proposal for interior furnish, interior furnishings for the Independence Township Department of Public Works in the amount not to exceed ninety-three thousand, five hundred fifty-three dollars, and Fire Station Number One in the amount not to exceed one hundred fifty-four thousand, nine hundred thirteen dollars, as submit, as submitted by ISCG of Royal Oak, Michigan, pursuant to Section 1.6 Lockwood and Extended Purchasing and 3.2 Procurement Procedures of the Township Procurement Petty Cash Credit Card Policy and direct supervisor to sign the proposal as the authorized representative of the township.
Second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry.
Motion D is move to transfer funds from the Fire Operating Fund to the Fire Capital Improvement Plan Fund in the amount of one million, nine hundred seventy-four thousand, five hundred forty-six dollars, and approve the twenty-three, twenty-twenty-three budget amendment number thirty-six as presented.
Second.
Okay, others in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry.
Thank you very much, we really appreciate it, thank you so much.
Thank you very much, everybody, appreciate it.
I'm happy to come knock down a wall.
Well, Dave, I think you still, okay?
Oh yeah, he's coming back.
Yeah, he's coming back.
Thanks again, I appreciate it, and the fire does too, it's a great project. So this next item is a very serious item that I would like to get direction from the board on. So if the board is familiar with the water system here in the township, which you are, we know that we did detect a PFAS, which is a water contaminant at two of our wellhouses. These were discovered in twenty-eighteen, we immediately shut those wells down. These wells produce water, drinking water for the township. As PFAS, which is polyfluoroalkylides substances, I almost got that right, has become a national issue, and the federal government has looked at it, and it's becoming a problem nationwide. So with that being said, there is, I always, I received some solicitations by registered mail that there is a national class action lawsuit that is being put into place right now against 3M and DuPont. 3M and DuPont are the main manufacturers of PFAS. PFAS is a substance that's been used for many, many years. It's mainly was used for firefighting foam. I used it when I was in the Navy, you know, it's called aqueous film-forming foam, it's fire foam. Come to find out, it's bad for drinking water, it's super bad for drinking water. So this class action lawsuit was put into place, and we were solicited through a, a notification of it, and they're looking at between DuPont and with 3M, up to, it's just under fourteen billion dollar settlement has been proposed, and it's for public water supplies only, across the whole country. So since we do have an issue here, we are on the list, and we were asked if we want to opt in with this lawsuit. So my recommendation is that we opt in. Now, because we do have an issue, and we can prove that, and we have the data that helps that. The other issues, I ran through Kelly Firm, is that we were also approached by a law firm, are they based out of Chicago, Dan?
Yes, Edelson.
Edelson Law Firm is based out of Chicago. Huge firm that are taking this on with, they probably have hundreds of clients, Dan, I think, that are joining in with them. They asked if we would like to join, and we were solicited by them to see if we wanted to join this class action lawsuit through them. I think the big caveat is, is that the payment to them is twenty percent of whatever they get for us. Now, it is in their best interest if the more they get, the more we get, or I should, vice versa. But there is consensus amongst myself and talking with Dan, you know, that we should probably, if we do, if the board authorizes us to move forward with this negotiation, and Dan, if you wanna tell, kinda go into details on how we would do this, if we would go into negotiations with this law firm, if we are directed to opt in. My recommendation is that we opt in, we can stick it, go alone and opt in, or we join this firm. So, and Dan's got a little bit more information if you can help me out with that.
Right, so as we've laid out for the board, first of all, by December fourth, we have to opt in for the DuPont settlement, and by December eleventh, for the 3M settlement. So that's, that's why it's in front of the board here tonight. We have done class action opt-ins, you basically have three options. You either, you opt in, in which case, the settlement is determined by lawyers, wherever the settlement comes from. You do nothing, which is considered to be an opt-out, and you may or may not get anything, but you have to pursue it on your own. And the third is to pursue it on your own, all right? So, so those are basically the options. The real issue, because I agree with Dave, that we should opt in. I mean, this is a settlement, it will be a class action, there's no guarantee that there would be any money beyond the fourteen billion that has been set aside. The real issue for us, and what we talked about today, and I think Dave has also talked about with the engineers, is whether or not it makes sense for the township to hire the attorneys. We've provided the materials in, the packet, they do take twenty percent. I had a conversation with their lead counsel from Chicago today to just get a sense of what, you know, basically, give me your pitch as to why you'll get twenty percent more than what we otherwise would get by just opting in. I'm convinced that they will do that, and the reason for that is that the formula in this case is, is a lot different than most of your class action cases. This will be a seven-year payout, and there'll be two or three different phases throughout that seven years, which will require the township to do some testing, to update the numbers, to see whether or not they're still at high levels, because this is basically a remediation of the problem. They take on all of that expense, so all of your engineering and legal expenses are within the contingency fee agreement. It's only paid if you collect, so there'll be no expenses over that seven years to the township. And then secondly, their goal is obviously, because it's a laddered approach, their goal is to have that testing result in higher levels so that we get more money for the remediation. I had a brief conversation with Dave, this is not really the bailiwick, I would say, of our, our engineers. I'm sure they can do it, but just like our, us, the law firm, I can do it, but we're starting from fresh. And we would have to learn it as we went over the next seven years. So I believe at this point, and, and I suggested today, that we have a meeting with these law firm to really nail down some of the technical details. I've not seen their contract, but I think that there is value in retaining the law firm, and that would be my recommendation, so. If the board's inclined to do it, we're on a kind of a tight timeframe here. If we did that, I would ask the board maybe for a motion to, first of all, as Dave's recommended, opt in, so that we, no doubt, whether you hire the law firm or not, my firm can do the opt-in. And if you remember, we did the opioid settlement, and in that case, it's a very straightforward formula, right? You're going to get X based upon this data. There's no reason to hire the class action attorneys, and we didn't, and we got the same amount of money we would have gotten had we hired those attorneys. In this case, it's a little different, because it is a floating scale, and it'll have to be redone over the next seven years, at least three times. So if you are inclined to hire the attorneys, I would recommend that Dave and I have a conversation with them. Make sure, see their contract, make sure that there isn't something there that we haven't seen. And if you want us to just move forward with opting in, we'll just do the opt-in. And we'll continue to monitor it to the best we can. A lot of this will come down to the engineering studies, and whether or not your scores for purposes of getting the reimbursement are higher based upon the testing that you've done. And I think that Dave might be able to add a little, because he's dealt more with your engineers. We have a lot of data, we're not quite sure what the state and the settlement wants out of that data, is that accurate?
That is correct, yes. The settlement, they're looking for PFOA and PFOA and PFOS. In layman's terms, those are two of the main chemicals, or the main compounds that are in PFAS. They're looking for twenty-seven different analytics, analytics of each one of those. And there's a certain EPA testing method that must be done. This is according to the, in Edelson, the settlement requirements. We've been doing testing since two thousand and eighteen through the state of Michigan. I don't know if the state of Michigan's even doing it under these requirements, or, or under the guidelines or the testing methods. So that is one of the reasons why, and the big questions that our engineering firm has had, because as the board knows, we have this whole other project that we're working on, that we received grant money on to try to identify where this PFAS issue is coming from. We received a hundred thousand dollar grant from Oakland County, and we matched it, so we're spending money to try to find that. So that's a related project, but that's not related to this at all. So the, the technical aspects of it, and that's what our engineering firm was telling us, is, you know, we, they're not really sure what is all, is gonna be entailed as far as how much of testing is. We will provide everything, that's why it's, it's somewhat easier for us, we will provide all our data to Edelson if we go in that direction, and then they can sift through that and say, hey, this is great, but you need this, this, this. Or they might say, we have to retest everything, and the cost is on them. Because I could tell you, testing for PFAS is expensive, it's a thing, it, it really is. I mean, some of the samples, we first started with a thousand dollars for one ta, one sample test. All the cost is on them, they're gonna do it all, so. And it's a lot to intake on that, or a lot to take in on that, but it's, it's.
Trustee Maraco?
I just have a couple of questions, Dan, too. Just 'cause I'm not familiar with this. So, seven years is a long time, right, to sign up with a one attorney, that's not an issue, right? That these are reputable guys, and this is what they do?
Right.
So that's not so.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I know the Edelson firm, I don't know them individually, I've never worked with them.
Right.
They are a recognized environmental firm in the country, maybe considered in the top couple.
Okay, if we sign up with them, we're signing up with them for this extended period of time, knowing that it's gra, a gradual scale for cleanup, right?
Yes, yes. Yes, yes.
Is that, that's.
And they'll be giving, and their engineers will be giving the township recommendations with regard to that remediation as well. So the recovery from the settlement is part of it, but it's also, okay, we, we obtained X amount of dollars for this remediation plan because they have to submit those plans in those stages to get that recovery.
Do we need to qualify with them, with our levels, to make it justifiable for them to put up the money for all the testing to then try to recoup it? You know, like, are they selecting?
They are at the OR level, at least the baseline level. See, they, they intend to show that it's actually higher, to be honest with you.
Okay, so we've already qualified really with them as a candidate that would justify them starting to spend money with the intention of recouping additional money at the end, right?
No doubt that they got their client list or potential client list through the reporting that we've done through Eagle through the state because we have to report to Eagle PFAS level of contaminants.
And do you know where we rank in the states as far as the recorded levels?
Well, currently, recently Michigan was one of the first states in the country that set a maximum contaminant level for PFAS compounds. There's probably a dozen that did it, there might be more right now. The EPA still hasn't. The EPA was supposedly going to set a maximum contaminant level in October of this year. If we are not in violation of the state standard, the state's set a standard for PFAS contamination, we are below that, but we're close, real close to it. If the EPA implements their rule, we will be in violation, which means we can't use the well at all. Well, we haven't used it since 2018. As soon as I detected it, I knew, I just had this feeling, I knew it was going to be a thing and I just shut the well off. We haven't pumped any of that water out into the system for any of the residents or anything. We just shut it off. This is before, and we immediately contacted the state. So as far as to answer your question, Sam, there is, there is a maximum contaminant level. There is for most contaminants with drinking water. We are below that, we're close to that at the state level. And Edelson knows that because we report that to the state. We have to report on it.
I guess what I'm trying to get at is it's going to be a bunch of slices of pie. And do we feel like we're a more substantial candidate for recovery than, you know, the baseline? Like we're barely in it or, or, you know?
Yeah, I was just going to say that, yeah. I was going to give you a flavor of it. There's, there's two stages. Only certain communities qualify for stage one, which we have. In fact, in all of Oakland County, there's only three communities have qualified. Once the money, I should say, that's been set aside for stage one has been exhausted, then stage two or tier two communities may be able to qualify if there's remaining money, which there should be. So yes, we're entitled to receive some money as early as, at the end of next year. The tier two communities are probably five, six years down the road and that's why it's a seven-year process because after we get done with phase one, we'll go back with new testing. We may need more remediation monies and they take care of us first before they move to tier two communities.
That's what I was kind of getting at. Like we're the three in the county, not like everybody in the county.
In this case, it's, it's, it's not a good thing we're there.
No, no, but, right.
And any money we receive, you know, I have to make clear that any money that we get for this is, is, has, must be used to help address the issue at hand. It's not a, a general fund type of money where it just goes into the general fund in the car. It has to, excuse me, it must be used to address the PFAS issue that you have.
And would we be using their contractors, somebody specific contractors and mon, you know, people doing the work because of the money being allocated for that work? Or would we be contracting out the work?
They would, and they're just going to do sample testing. And now keep in mind, they're only going to sample the two wells because it's, you know, we have the Parkston Gardens and Chestnut Hills wells.
Right, but the remediation work, right?
Remediation depends on what, what the remediation is.
Right.
Now, we get the money to use to spend on remediation. That's our control. For instance, if we were going to put filtration in, we'd go through the same process if we're going to build a project here. We now have, we're funded for it.
Okay, okay.
We would have the funding for it.
Thank you.
Okay, I need a motion.
May I just, a quick question? I think you partially answered it, but there's the phase one and phase two. Phase one appears to comprise about two-thirds of that $14 billion roughly. So which we qualify for. Will we also qualify for phase two when that comes around or is that to be determined?
We don't actually ever fall into phase two. We're, we're in, I said phase, my apologies. It's really tier one communities and tier two communities. So they've set aside the money for tier one. If we're fully reimbursed, it'll be from tier one money and depending upon who gets reimbursed from these other communities, it could roll over to tier two.
Okay, they have it, they have it. The language in here is phase one and two.
Oh, well, that's where I got it from.
So yeah, yeah, no, so you were, you were speaking correctly. So it really more accurately stated is in terms of tiers and we, we fall into tier one.
Yeah.
Tier two will be another population of municipalities or entities impacted by, by this, okay? And just to underscore my understanding, this, hiring this environmental law firm, they would, in addition to, I mean, part of the understanding, they get the 20%, but they're also assuming all upfront costs, including testing and so forth, okay?
Yeah, right, that's correct.
Okay, Diane, can you tell me again when the deadline is to opt in with the attorney firm? With the law firm?
Well, I don't think there's an actual deadline. I would certainly do it before we opt in to the, the two deadline dates of December 4th and December 11th.
I just wondered, because you said we haven't seen the actual contract. And if that's something that you'd want to actually get your hands on the contract to make a decision or if there'd be any, I mean, she tough for negotiation.
I'm sorry, yeah, that, exactly. And so unless the board's not comfortable with this, I would authorize us, if you're comfortable with moving forward with the law firm, moving forward with the law firm for the contract to come back to the board. I believe your next meeting is December 4th?
5th.
5th. That you could actually approve the actual contract on the 5th, but we would move forward with the law firm because they want to do some testing even before the 4th and the 11th and they would do that.
Okay, so they would do that before we had signed the contract or would they be willing to do that?
Well, this is what's going to happen. We're going to opt in either way, right? So whether it's even my law firm were to opt in, the actual testing deadlines after you've opted in are going to be out further, right? So, you know, the, the reality is, is that we could approve that contract December 4th at our, 5th, is our next meeting, December 5th.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
All right. Someone would like to make a motion?
Can the motion be made, you know, once the contract comes in? Then it's Dan's judgment, whether it's good or not? Or does it have to come back to us? Can it just be?
If you're comfortable with that, what I would, you could make a motion that we approve the law firm moving forward, subject to a recommendation from Dave and myself to the supervisor. I mean, that's an appropriate motion if you're comfortable with that.
Okay, all right, fine. Okay.
See, the motion that way it's written right now, it just talks about opting in or out, not, not about the lawyers.
Right.
All right.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Try it. I'll move to approve participation in the proposed settlements regarding aqueous film forming foams, products, liabilities, litigation and direct the township DPW director to submit the applicable claims forms to participate in the proposed settlement. Also to approve our attorneys, along with the director of the DPW, to review the contract of the attorneys that we want to hire to represent us in the class action lawsuit prior to, we would, prior to the township approving the contract.
Yes, and the, the actual contract, but we're authorized to move forward with the Edelson law firm. I'd name the law firm and you have the proposal in the packet.
Okay, so to, to approve the, our attorneys and the DPW director to, to review the contract with Edelson attorneys?
Yes.
And move forward with that upon their.
Conditioned upon the DPW and the attorneys approving the contract.
Conditionally upon the attorneys in the DPW approving the said contract.
Yeah, I've, yeah.
Somebody can clean that up in a minute, you know?
Somebody.
So, yeah. The clerks need clarification.
Not in there.
You got it? Or do you want me to clarify? All right, I, I, if I might?
Would you please?
All right. I would authorize the DPW director and attorneys to retain the Edelson law firm with the condition that the contract would be brought back to the board for approval in the future.
That's what I'm saying, right there. That's my motion.
All right.
Okay.
Good job, Sam. All right, is the motion have made by Trustee Morocco and second by Trustee Richie. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I just, can I say something really quick because, Dave?
Try to say that last five minutes.
I don't know if you heard, it was, it was literally just on the news this week, but for your investigation in the PFAS, there is a company that was out there that might be able to, they're talking about how they can figure out taking it out and it's something like almost boiling it and the stuff comes to the top. Look up the news story because it was very interesting. This company coming out to try and fix this.
I think I know which one you're talking about. So PFAS, you know, just in a real quick, PFAS is, it's pretty easy to filter out of water. It's, what do you do with it after you filter it out? You know, the EPA is considering, considering it or classifying it as a hazardous waste. And you can't put it in the sewer because sewer treatment plants definitely don't want it. They have that problem anyways because they discharge it from rivers and streams in the state. So filtering it out is not really hard, looking for methods to, to do that. And I, I think I've seen something like that, but I'll definitely keep tabs on different filtration. What's that?
So putting some cans behind the DPW.
There you go. Very, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. He's going to go up there for the short one.
Yeah. Rick is the short one.
This is an easy one here. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Rick. Nice to see you.
I have budget amendment number 37 here. It's an increase for the PRS recreation class revenue and expenses. Basically what's going on here, you know, every year when the Parks, Rec and Seniors put their budgets together, you know, they use past history and they try to come up with their best estimates as to what's going to happen in the coming year. In this particular case for recreational classes, they put $50,000 out there for revenues and $35,000 for the expense side of that. That generated basically a 30% margin. Well, as it turns out, the 50,000 is now turned into $57,000 and they don't have the appropriate expenses now to cover that additional $7,000 in revenue. So that's what's, that's what this budget amendment is about. We need to basically increase the, the revenue side by $7,000 and keeping that 30% margin, we will increase expenses $4,900. So the difference of $2,100, it's actually a good thing. It's, it's actually a reduction to the amount of money that the general fund provides to Parks and Rec. So it is a reduction there. So there is a savings on that standpoint, so. But that's basically what has, what's going on with this amendment.
Okay, any question for board members? All right, I need a.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2023 budget amendment number 37 as Rick has presented.
Okay.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rick. All right. Now we have a budget session with our. Rick Jagger.
I need like a five minute. Set this out earlier. Prepare our Q. There are two, three more to come. And I will get into those and.
Hey, thanks.
You're a giver.
Appreciate it.
Dave, you got a drawing?
Sure. Okay.
Okay, so this evening, we are actually going to be covering sewer and water. There's CIP, basically capital projects that they're going, that they have planned for the next 10 years. Going through the actual sewer and water fund budgets. And then on the tail end of all of that, we're going to go through the Sashaba Drain Regional Maintenance Fund and the Downtown Development Authority Fund, okay? So starting out, we're going to do the CIP for sewer and water. We'll start with sewer. We have some big numbers out here, but the current plan calls for total spending of about $12,376,000, of which $7,931,000 is planned for 2024. So some of the highlights for the three budgeted years are as follows. In 2024, as mentioned, we have about $7.9 million worth of projects. A lot of little things, but there's some big items as well. So we have a new DPW sign for $10,000. Again, this is split with, with water, so it's $10,000 on each side, total of 20. Exterior lighting upgrade, another $10,000, but again, split with, with water, so $20,000 total. Interior renovations, which we just talked about, $850,000, split with water, so $1.7 million in total. Replace DPW generator and ATS, $80,000, again, split with water, so 160 total. Portable bypass pump for 40. We're looking at a new all-wheel drive van for 70, actually, again, split with water, so $140,000. Lift station improvements slash pump replacements, $30,000. Big one here, Parview lift station rehab, reconstruction basically, $1.8 million. Lift station generators and ATS replacements, about $50,000. Ejector station rehab and submersible stations, this has been going on a little bit. This has to do with that DWSRF loan that we received. So that's the $3.7 million that we'll be spending there. Deer Hill lift station rehab, that's going to cover pumps, odor control and instrumentation for about a million dollars. And then we have sewer INI for $250,000 and then just some regular site improvements and additional security fencing around the lift stations for $14,000. All of that's planned for 2024. In '25, we're looking at about $564,000, so some minor things here, but still important. Lift station improvements, pump replacements for 30. Sewer flow meters, $20,000. Rehab the Flemings Lake lift station for $250,000. Again, we have sewer INI control for the 250 and then the site improvements and additional security fencing for another 14. In 2026, $614,000 is planned. Again, we have the lift station improvement, pump replacement for 30. Sewer flow meters again for 20. We're looking at replacing the garage doors at, at the DPW for $50,000 or again, split with water, so 100,000 total. Rehab the Townsend Lake lift station for $250,000. And then again, we have sewer INI control for 250 and then the site improvements and additional security for 14. So all of that's planned for the next three years. Any questions on the sewer side at this point?
Any questions, board members?
What's INI?
Infiltration and inflow, leaky pipes, cracks, drawn water.
Looking that up. Infiltration and inflow.
There's so many letters flying around.
I know.
I know, yeah.
Question on the van?
Yeah, exactly, I want to know exactly.
On the new van for next year? What, what, what is that for? I know we got a new van this year after the accident.
Yeah, it's, it's all-wheel drive van. It's for, Tony's getting one and so is Lucas, who works in water treatment with Tom. Currently they're driving pickup trucks and they don't have any place to put their equipment.
So will their trucks be, are they ones that we own? Will we be selling those or are we going to?
We'll get rid of a couple of extra ones that we, the older ones.
Okay, so you'll rotate.
Yeah, regardless of who has it, we get rid of the oldest stuff that's in the worst shape and kind of reallocate what we still own. And we'll all needs too. I mean, these are purchases, so, you know, most of our fleet right now is a lease. Leasing, we look in leasing options, it's just, it was insane what they want. We can buy them cheaper and then own them forever.
I just wondered because if we, if we were getting rid of two trucks then that gives up the snowplows on two vehicles. If you're replacing trucks with possibly the vans, they wouldn't be using vans.
Yeah, Tony doesn't have a plow on it anyways.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And we bought the Dodge, so that has a plow.
Any other questions on sewer? No, moving out of water. The plan actually for, right now calls for total spending of $51,890,000, of which $7,781,000 is planned for 2024. So some of the highlights, again, in 2024, $7,781,000. Water meter endpoint changeout program, $350,000. We're looking at eliminating dead-end water meters, $150,000. We have VFD replaced. We have VFD replacements for forty thousand dollars. You want to tell them what VFD is?
Mm-hmm.
Variable frequency drive. Okay? They're used to control speeds of a motor. It's slow up instead of on high, well, it's just really slow, nice and even, keeps the water flowing without pressure spikes. Uh, we talked about this one on the sewer side. Some of these obviously, they're going to be duplicates because they, they're shared. Uh, so we have the building interior renovations at the eight fifty. Uh, replace the DPW generator and ATS for eighty. The new DPW sign for ten, exterior lighting for ten. Uh, the new all-wheel, uh, drive van for seventy. And then we've got some things that are singular to water only. We have the DPW storage tank number two exterior overcoat for sixty thousand. Clarkson Bluffs booster pump gen set and ATS upgrade for five hundred and fifty thousand. Backwash pump replacements, thirty. Uh, water main extension from Bay Court Park to Parview. You want to say anything about that one? Yeah, that's part of the, uh, so that's part of the, the five point four million dollar project that we were doing. And we got the grant money for, to run new main, new water main down Parview. We have, we have to pay for a new water main from Bay Court to that new water main. So that was not ineligible, uh, expense when we first submitted it. We need money for that. So that's on us.
The Bay Court Pump House.
Bay Court Pump House, which is way in the back. Cut through the woods and come out right out of Bay Court. Okay, uh, moving on, the five point four million you just mentioned, uh, Parview, uh, slash Walden Water Main Extension. Uh, that's five point four million dollars, uh, of which that project is scheduled for the spring of this next year, correct, twenty-twenty-four? And that is the one that's a hundred percent loan forgiveness. Right. That's a good one there.
That's good, yeah.
Uh, they also have site improvements and additional security fencing around their water pump stations, uh, sixteen thousand dollars. In twenty-twenty-five, ten million, three hundred and thirty-six thousand is planned. Uh, we have the, again, the water meter endpoint changeout program for three fifty. Eliminate dead-end water mains, a hundred and fifty. VFD replacements, forty. Backwash pump replacements, thirty. The elevated storage tank number one, wet exterior blast and paint, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And we're looking at, uh, another DWSRF loan in the amount of nine point five million dollars for water main extensions. And again, to address DFAS, I believe. Yeah, I just want to, just want to touch on that. So the five point four million that we got for this project, it was a hundred percent loan forgiveness. There's still bipartisan infrastructure money left, a lot of it left. So we're going to go after some more to extend more water main and get as much loan forgiveness as possible. And that's why this is a big number here. We're looking at install water main like a Princess, Par, uh, Paramus, Paramus, Princess. All of that over there has no water main. And we're also looking at, uh, in Birdland, as, as everybody calls it here. There's no water main there and it kind of, I don't understand why there's never any water main there. Fire department really supports me on that, they had a fire right this year in, in Birdland, they bring trucks in. So we're going to extend, try to get new water mains installed there as well. Plus, we're also wanting to get water main down on Sashawbaw here over on Heath and, um, pretty much the, uh, streets that are west of the Sipto Gas Station. Which, because there's no water main there, you know, and they go from Sashaw, or sorry, they go from Maybe all the way to Parview. I mean, there's, oh, I don't, you know, how many houses are on each one of them streets there? Is there a hundred?
There's all well, it's all well over there?
It's all well, and there's, it's, there's no cross streets, I mean, there's, it's like a.
There's just long roads.
There's a lot of how, homes on that street from Maybe to Parview. And there's several streets like that. So we want, we've got a program put together to, uh, install water main down there as well. That can change, the number is large, that's what would cost, we get our assistance alone. We get loan forgiveness, we go forward, if we don't get anything, we scale it right back.
There's quite a few subdivisions south of Maybe that, uh, aren't in the, uh, wat, public water. They're all wells, so just older subdivisions that just never.
In that area down, we're going to go after two, is it, is it double-headed sewer here, or double-edged sewer for this? The, the Paramus, Princess over there, we're going to try to get money for emerging contaminants, federal money, loan forgiveness for that for PFAS. Down here on Maybe, we're going to go after, um, emerging contaminants for groundwater. Because there's, years and years ago, that Sipto Gas Station, I think across the street is a dry cleaner, had a leak in the ground and took out all these wells, so the county's on us, they're, they support us. So there's documentation that the wells are, um, are pretty nasty over there. They are nasty over there. So we're going to try to help them out, get some money.
So kind of as a follow-up to the water main, extending the water main, I, I know I've talked to you before about it. Can we get the fire hydrants?
Paint it?
Please. Maybe just start, I mean, I know it's a big undertaking and I know it's going to be costly. I know we can't get part-time people to mow the grass, so maybe go out for bid, hire it out and maybe do it in some sort of a schedule where we do the main arteries? And that's what's so visible? I mean, we're gonna, I mean, hopefully if we move forward with branding, we're going to have signs and, you know, get that done and then we could work in the internal subdivisions, you know, sometime after, please?
Absolutely, yeah, you're absolutely right. It's, it's been on our radar, but, you know, but it's, it's time. We will address that and then we'll attack the main corridors because they get beat up from the winter and the salt and slush and they really start looking pretty bad, so.
Have they been done since you've been here?
Not since I've, I think the original coating's on there.
Are they going to be red?
Absolutely. You don't like red? I'm just curious.
I don't know, I just, other cities have different colored, I, I don't know what the, why they do it. I don't know what the point is.
Other communities, you know, red is, red was where we should go. Other communities paint them different colors for different reasons. Uh, some of them are more aesthetics, but you've seen hydrants where it's white cap and green. You know, green body with a white cap and stuff, those are really kind of hard to find at night and in the wintertime. You know what I mean? Other ones paint them color based on what size of water main they're connected. We're going to do something along those lines. So the fire department, they like to pull up and if that's hydrant is connected to a twelve-inch water main, they're, they're more likely, they're going to connect to that because they can get more volume of water as opposed to one that's connected to a eight-inch water main. You're still going to get pressure, but you get more volume out of it, so it helps the fire department. We've done it in other communities, they worked that, so.
Trustee Rich.
But we will paint them and they will.
Thank you.
Not colored.
Trustee Rich.
But red.
I know, we just talked about water and sewer. Is the DPW going to have like another budget session by itself? Because you get to like a fueling station and the other things that are happening that are through your department, but as far as the budgeting? Are you, is there gonna be? Yeah, well, I mean, is it, you know, where is the fueling station covered at? If, if all we're talking about is water, sewer and DPW?
Yeah, the fueling station is actually right now part of ARPA. But we still need to come back to the board and reappropriate the proper funds to address that. We have not done that yet. But the project is, they both bid out, everything is ready to go in the spring again. So those conversations.
You got like the building renovations and everything, and there should be, like, there's a piece of DPW that's not being covered, I guess is what I'm getting at, so.
The, the fuel depot?
Well, the depot, the, the, you, we just approved money to remodel the building. It seemed like that, that would be, that'd all be budgeted, wouldn't it?
It is, it is. We did. Yeah, the interior renovations.
Yeah, I saw that, but I understand, but the fueling station, where's that?
Oh.
It seems like that would be part of the DPW, since it's happening on your property.
Yeah, I mean, well, the, the, the fueling station is, is used by all, it's common law. And that was when we came to the board and we approved the design and engineering, we went out for bid. You know, we said we'd come back later or the board would decide how funding was to be appropriated for that.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I was just asking, is that part of, going to be part of the DPW budget? Or is that going to be fallen or something else?
It may eventually fall under it, but right now, it's kind of in limbo because we're still spending some of the ARPA money but, and we need to wait and see where we wind up at the end of this year and what funds are available yet from the ARPA money. And then we'll come back to the board, reappropriate the funds and probably set the budgets for all these new projects, including the fuel station at that point.
Okay, then it'll be put in DPW or somebody's budget.
It'll be answered, it's not going to start until springtime. We have, we have several months to address this and it's high on my radar because we've been changing some things ourselves without coming to the board. So we need to get all of that approved by you, uh, to make sure that you're in agreement with the reappropriations that we're suggesting.
Okay. All right.
Uh, so let's see, finishing of twenty-twenty-five, again, site improvements and additional security fencing, sixteen thousand dollars. Uh, twenty-twenty-six, one point three million dollars is planned. Uh, again, water meter endpoint changeout program, three fifty. Eliminating dead-end water mains, a hundred and fifty. VFD replacements, forty. Backwash pump replacements, thirty. Uh, this is the garage door replacement that we talked about with sewer, so fifty thousand there. We have a water main extension, Clintonwood Park, four hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, elevated storage tank number three, wet exterior blast and paint, two hundred and twenty-five. And then again, site improvements and, uh, security fencing around home sites, sixteen thousand. So those are the, um, all the projects planned over the next three years. Uh, obviously, uh, the next schedules here on pages three, four, five and six, they lay out those three years along with seven others. If you're interested as to what else is coming, uh, after those three initial years that we just talked about.
I just have a quick question on the previous comment on the water tanks. Dave, can you tell me which, where's, what's one and two and three?
Number one is, uh, White Lake Road and Dixie Highway.
White Lake and Dixie, is that hidden back there in the McLaren property? Okay, yeah.
Number two is the standpipe at DPW.
That's on the property.
It's, it's a standpipe, it's just a big can.
Right.
That's at the DPW.
That's the one you're getting ready to do first.
And, and tank number three is one here in Sashawbaw.
All right, so this one's getting a new paint job with a new facelift and logos and everything?
No, the one at DPW is, that's the first one, tank two.
I'm saying in twenty-twenty-six, you have this big one here getting done.
If we have our new logo or whatever, we'll just incorporate the bid spec and we'll put it, we'll paint it right on there.
Right. Todd, give it.
That was sort of going to be my comment. I wonder if, if and when we pass the logo and the branding, if that might be something you want to do all at one time so we don't have different logos on different, you know, if they can sand it and paint it and put a new logo on it so we're uniform versus this one's got.
I asked that question to, in, to our tank, you know, um, vendors and painters, they're like, yeah, they'll kill you on re-mobilization. Because when they paint it, when they put a new exterior overcoat, they want it, they have to come back, then they're going to hit you on mobilization and, and it'll be ten times more than what it would be just to add it onto the contract as it is.
You might be able to have them come back and do some kind of a wrap?
I, I.
Over the logo, something that's relatively inexpensive rather than, you know, thinking about a whole new paint job. There's going to be some way to update that logo, uh, short-term until it's time to do the tank again, so.
Yeah, when, when, if we have a new logo first quarter next year?
Hopefully.
I mean, we can have the tank, that's budget for next year, I can have you do it in the fall.
Great, yeah, okay.
If we have it, we got it in place and we'll just go for it.
Yeah.
You know, we do it then.
I know, hopefully, as we, in the.
But I would love to, I would love to, I want to put the new logo on there, whatever we have, so.
All right.
It'd look nice.
All right, continue, please.
Now.
Oh, do you have a question?
Yeah, just, um, I see a recurring, some recurring items throughout the three years. Just wondering, uh, like the water meter endpoint changeout program and the dead end, elimination of the dead end water mains. Will those line items be eliminated at some point? Is there like a phased approach to tackling these items? That's about a half million dollars, I was just curious.
So the, the water meter endpoints, so what we're doing right now is we're upgrading our water meters and we're, we're addressing all, focusing most efforts on, on the commercial side of things. We're putting a new water meter in where you can, it's so much more accurate and it's time. Typical water meter's lifespan is like twenty years and then the accuracy goes down. If it doesn't measure all the water that goes through there, that's lost revenue.
Right.
So you, you have to make sure that you, you keep updating those. Uh, and with the new technology right now, uh, our whole system is deployed with what we're putting in. You could literally read all the water meters in probably five seconds. But, I mean, they will instantly just go. But right now, it takes a couple of days, I have a guy who drives around and we get misreads. So the technology we put in there, it's, it's awesome, it's really cool. And any new, we're also installing those in any new homes that we build. Or if a meter fails, we'll upgrade that one right away. But we're concentrating on the, uh, commercial side of things and this is a phased-in project. I've had experience before where they try and they repair, replace all the meters at one time. And in hindsight, it's like, well, we didn't want to do that again because you're going to, they're only going to fail or the accuracy all go down, you'll have to do it again in twenty years, so you want to do it over the course of a few years.
Right.
That way you're not spending twenty million dollars at one time to replace them all.
Right.
The dead ends is dead end water mains. Uh, we have neighborhoods that go around, there's a dead end, the water main stops right there. I hate those. It's terrible for water quality. Uh, you want to have everything looped together. And that way, if, uh, you have a main break or you have to shut some water off here, you're not shutting off this whole street. It's going to be fed from the other side, you can isolate breaks and issues.
Don't you have software that helps you identify those areas too? Do you have software that helps you identify those areas and, and, uh?
Yep, GAS mapping is the key for that, it really helps out with that. So we look at those and that's part of like our CIP that we do, we put it together in our water model. It's like, hey, where can we do a project here to get rid of a bunch of water mains or, uh, dead ends here? It might be as simple as connecting two hundred feet of water main, you just got rid of a big one, you know, giant one, so.
Right, so that could hypothetically extend into many years as well?
Yes.
As you identify them, there's no shortage of them?
There is no shortage of them in any of those types.
I think the other thing with the new meters too is, uh, and your monitoring, it's data monitoring and everything. It's, uh, hopefully the new meters will prevent people from, uh, you know, like go, they go to Florida in the winter and their pipes bust and the water's running in their house. You know, you can set it to, uh, to try and identify those types of places. And maybe we can go and shut the water off before it ruins the whole house, too.
Oh, wow.
And that's the, the, the beauty of that is the, is the customer interface. Well, you can log into your own water, see your usage, you can set up alarms. It's like Ron said, if you go away, if more than twenty gallons a minute goes through there, you'll, you'll get an email, you know? It'll let you know that you had an issue.
Right.
And then you can call us, we can go there and shut the water off in the front yard or, uh.
Basically, other benefits to it than just measuring the water as well.
It really helps, and they're really, the new ones are super accurate, so, you know, it's a commodity, right? You have to pay for the commodity you use, so, um, you, you know, we get our revenue, our fair revenue for that commodity, but it also helps the customer manage how much water they use if they so choose to do so. There's a lot of tools that help with that.
Okay, continue, please.
Keep going?
Yeah, keep going.
Okay, the next thing we're going to get into is the DPW sewer fund by itself. There were two attachments that, uh, I handed out as well, one of it's notes for sewer fund presentation. That's probably the one we're going to go through here right now. Ron, I tried to address your, um, suggestion when I did this with the General Fund. I don't know if this is what you were thinking or not, but what I did is, like on the very top or summary, uh, page seven, twenty-four, that's the handout that you actually got, the twenty-four pages that I gave to you. So page seven is that same summary and that's where it's located. And I've done that all the way through with assumptions, revenues, labor and benefits, kind of referencing the actual pages if you want to read a little more detail about these items.
Yep, that's good, thank you.
Okay, is that what you were referring to?
That helps, that's, yep, I guess I didn't know how you were going to do it, but.
I wasn't sure either and I just decided, let's just try this and see if that's maybe what you were suggesting. I think it was a good suggestion. So if.
I think it helps correlate back and forth.
It does, like I said, you can, you can reference back to that, there's a little bit more verbiage there. Um, wasn't able to trim these back as much as I did the General Fund, but there's still a little bit less cumbersome to go through, okay? So to start out, the summary, revenues are projected to decrease three point four million dollars or thirty-five point three percent. Labor costs are projected to increase forty-four thousand or four point eight percent. Operating costs are projected to increase four hundred and fifty-five thousand or eight percent. And debt is projected to decrease ten thousand or five point seven percent. For an overall decrease to the fund balance, nine hundred and sixteen thousand, eight hundred and forty-one dollars, which is three million. We'll just call it four million dollars or a hundred and thirty percent less than twenty-twenty-three. Capital costs, which are shown separately, are projected to increase two hundred and ninety-six thousand or three point nine percent. On the assumption side, obviously, you know, we've gone through these assumptions a lot. Uh, the wages, the hospitalization, life insurance, it's all the same as what has been presented in the past. So I've eliminated that at this point, we're focused strictly on the assumptions that pertain to sewer. Uh, so charges from the Great Lakes Water Authority, GLWA, are projected to increase seven and a half percent in twenty-twenty-four and ten percent in twenty-five and twenty-six. Uh, we've secured a CWSRF loan for four million dollars in the state, uh, for the conversion of the ejector stations to submersible stations and that's scheduled to start in the spring of twenty-twenty-four. Pump efficiency testing is in even years, we're pumping, so we're budgeting that for twenty-four. And capital charge decreased due to less hookups planned in twenty-twenty-four.
Uh, moving on to revenues. Revenues are projected to decrease three point four million dollars or thirty-five point three percent. So what are some of the, there are increases that go along with the decreases. So on the increase side, we have sewage treatment service up four hundred and twenty, almost four hundred and twenty-nine thousand or eight point eight percent. That's due to price increases from GLWA that are passed on to residents. Usage for Clarkston, nineteen thousand, almost twenty thousand dollars or ten point six percent. Uh, pretty much the same thing, GLWA price increases. Interest income and market value adjustments up a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars or four hundred and thirty-four percent. And that's due to the most recent investment strategy laid out to the board back in August. Then we had three other increases to revenues that amounted to just under two thousand dollars. On the decrease side, state grants decreasing seventeen thousand, five hundred or a hundred percent. That was due to receiving an NMRMA RAP grant in twenty twenty-three for the purchase of a portable generator that won't recur in twenty-four. Proceeds from debt, four million dollars, uh, decrease due to the twenty twenty-three draws on the CWSRF loan that won't recur in twenty twenty-four. Just to clarify this, um, this four million dollars, we actually expect it to be drawn this year in twenty twenty-three. But there's been a few delays and hiccups and whatever the case may be, and now this project isn't gonna happen until twenty-four. And those draws won't happen until twenty-four. But I couldn't budget for those again because then we'd be double dipping and the fund balances would get all messed up. So I just left it in twenty-three. We're going to basically, when we get to the pulling projects forward like we always do every year in March, April timeframe, this will be one of the ones that gets pulled forward and then we'll just, we'll capture the money at that point in time. Uh, let's see here. Uh, capital charges down sixteen thousand, two hundred or five point four percent. Again, due to six fewer hookups planned in twenty-four compared to twenty-three. Reimbursement, uh, down seventeen thousand, seven or a hundred percent. That just happened to be the villages portion of the OMID twenty twenty B bond that we paid in full. And that was their portion of it. Uh, so again, we're not expecting that to recur in twenty-four unless we pay off another bond and, you know, less more, but. We're not anticipating that at this point. Uh, proceeds from sale of capital assets down five thousand dollars or fifty percent. It's just due to having less to sell in twenty-four compared to twenty-three. Moving on to labor and benefits are projected to increase forty-four thousand, uh, or four point eight percent. Wages full-time obviously is the big, uh, the big culprit here. It's up about thirty-seven thousand dollars or six percent. Uh, the bulk of that is just normal annual four percent wage slash step increases. We do have people working their way through the step program. That accounts for about thirty-one thousand. There was some additional for vacation payout and additional for our year-end accrual, about five thousand. And there were seven other increases that totaled just under eleven thousand. On the decrease side, nothing really substantial. There were just three other decreases that amounted to six thousand dollars. Moving on to operating debt costs, they're projected to increase four hundred and forty-five thousand or seven point six percent. On the increase side, we have contractual services. Uh, it's only up about sixty-eight hundred dollars, um, or four point five percent, but there's some additions and subtractions that make up that number. So we actually put in an additional twenty-five thousand for engineering services. Uh, we put in fifty thousand for the sewer master plan. There's been a decrease for the sewer rate study that's in twenty-three, not expected to recur in twenty-four. Uh, that was twenty-two thousand reduction. Uh, we have a decrease for the hydraulic sewer model project in twenty-three. Uh, not expected to recur in twenty-four. That was just under fifty-four thousand. Decrease for the hydraulic sewer model project in twenty-three, not expected to recur in twenty-four, fifty-three thousand. And we had additional for dollars moved to contractual service pipeline in twenty-three. They needed to do additional scoping, so we pulled it from this, this particular account. And we're basically just putting it back, so that's the increase of seventy-seven hundred dollars there. Sewerage treatment services, uh, up two hundred and sixty-three thousand or seven point five percent. That's due to the seven and a half percent increase in GLWA. Electric at the lift station's up fifty-five hundred or nine point three, and that's just due to increased rates from DTE. Building and grounds maintenance up thirty-two thousand or a hundred and twenty-eight percent due to the addition, uh, for the removal of the underground fuel tanks, uh, which is thirty-five thousand dollars. Equipment repairs and maintenance pumps, seventeen thousand dollar increase, fifty-one point seven. And that's due to, we're putting in additional twenty thousand for pump efficiency testing. Again, that's done in even years, so next year, you'll, in twenty-five, they'll, it won't be there, so there will be a decrease on that line for that, for that reason. Uh, there's an additional three thousand put in there, or actually was put in in twenty-three for replacement of rotating elements at Deer Hill Lift Station, or Homestead, yeah, no, it's Lift Station, and lifting chains at Fleming's Lake Lift Station. Depreciation, uh, increasing about a hundred and twenty-nine thousand or ten point one percent. That's based on the projects that we had just talked about. Uh, small equipment, uh, just under six thousand dollar increase or forty-seven point seven percent. That's due to six computer replacements in twenty-four versus one in twenty-three. Then there were twelve other increases that amount to about twelve thousand five. On the decrease side, contractual services pipeline down that seventy-seven hundred dollars, which we explained above. Um, we just have to move money in there because they need to do additional, additional scoping, so again, we're not planning for that again to happen, so there is a decrease there of the seventy-seven hundred. Equipment repairs and maintenance down fifty-five hundred dollars or twenty-three point four percent. Uh, we have additional, uh, money that was put in twenty-three for excessive tractor truck repairs. It's not expected to recur in twenty-four, knock on wood. Uh, offset by an additional two thousand dollars we put into the twenty-four, uh, budget for just general repairs and just price increases. Uh, interest, long-term debt decreasing ten thousand, one sixty-eight or five point seven percent. That's due to less principal used and calculated interest because we pay interest every, or principal payments every year, so that principal comes down. We pay less interest back. And there were two other decreases amounting to forty-two hundred dollars. Capital cost side, um, we're looking at an increase of about two hundred and ninety-six thousand or three point nine percent. Not a lot to say here. It's just building, building improvements, DPW building, uh, two hundred and ten thousand or twenty-eight point five percent due to budgeting more in twenty-four when compared to twenty-three. We went through all the projects. It's basically just the difference in years and, and it amounts to about a two hundred and ten thousand dollar increase. Distribution system improvements, again, up a hundred and thirty-eight thousand or two point two percent. Again, it's just due to budgeting more in twenty-four when compared to twenty-three, and again, all of those projects were talked about as well, okay? On the decrease side, equipment down fifty-two thousand or twenty-one point seven percent. And that was due to adding fifty-two thousand in twenty-three for a portable generator that won't recur in twenty-four. So what does all this have to do with fund balance? The fund balance is projected to decrease three point nine million dollars or a hundred and thirty, a hundred and thirty point one percent. There's a couple different points here. The fiscal twenty-four plan deficit is roughly nine hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. The projected twenty-three fund balance, this year that we're currently in, this is just our projection, is about thirty-three point three million dollars, and that's split between restricted and unrestricted. And just for clarification, restricted is all of your equipment, pipes and all that stuff that's in the ground, all your pump stations. That's, that's restricted. The unrestricted is basically cash. There are some liabilities in there and receivable, but the bulk of it is cash, okay? So you'll hear us refer to cash, and that's the unrestricted portion of your fund balance, okay? So the projected twenty twenty-six fund balance is coming in at about thirty million, five hundred and eighty thousand. And that's split between restricted at twenty-two, yeah, twenty-two million, and the cash portion of the unrestricted about eight point five million. Cash is decreasing primarily due to large capital purchases and increased operational costs.
I'll just, uh, point out, when you say cash, in, in many cases, that's the money I'm investing, so it's not, you know. We really don't have the cash sitting there. We're investing it and making sure it's available, so.
Well, correct, yes, but the money's there when we need to spend it. Because you'll make sure of that.
Yes.
Hey, Rick.
And we're making money on it.
So, uh, we got a downward trend in the, in the fund balance. What has deemed a healthy fund balance, um, over time? Is this something we're concerned with? Does that require raising rates?
It's, it's not a concern right this moment. But it, not for sewer, but it's, it's, it's got the same problem that water has. And if I can explain, I do have a presentation that I really wanna get in front of the board here, and that will happen, probably within the first quarter of next year. Well, the DPW is living off of the growth of the township to a certain extent. Uh, we have one-time, like, capital charge fees, hookup fees. These are all one-time things that happen when we have new developments that go in. And obviously, they get the ongoing billing, you know, when they hook up to the system and everything. But those dollars are being used to basically prop up the operations. And I've actually put an analysis together that shows if you strip all that stuff out, we don't have any money in about seven years. So it goes down quick, pretty quickly. So at some point, yes, it is a concern. We are gonna have to address rates at some point. It's just a matter of how we do it, when we do it. Do we do it in one big fell swoop? Do we do it gradually? There's a lot that has to go into this yet, and that's the presentation that we wanna get in front of the board. Um, and like I said, I have a lot of that work done. It's actually kind of fascinating, uh, from that standpoint, if you're into the numbers and, and understand that. It's, uh, it's quite compelling when you start looking at the numbers and seeing what they can do when you don't have the things that we're relying on right now.
Yeah, yeah. Excuse me, you know, one of the things, excuse me, that really caused us in the sewer side is the disposal fee. We have no control over that. We're just a collection system. It goes through Oakland County and ends up in Detroit. Well, they set the rates.
Right.
And they have their capital improvement plans they do, and all their big projects, and the CDTs and cities, villages and townships, they pay for all of it. And they bake it into the rates, and they float bonds, and they do all this, and they're like, here's your share. It's like, you know, it's hard to keep a dollar in our own pocket, you know, and that's, that's our biggest argument that we've had for a long time. Thank God we're not water customers. I mean, we gotta deal with it on the sewer, but if we were on the water side of things, it would be tenfold worse.
Right, right.
You know, but we're not water customers. They got nothing to do with our water.
Yeah.
Knock on wood.
Yeah, and I would, I would just say that it sounds like it's a concern down the road, that the earlier we know about it, the earlier we, we can absorb the bad news and spread that burden out over a longer period of time rather than two years from doomsday.
Yeah, and, well, and, and, and the good thing is, is a small change in the rates helps tremendously, you know? It's, it's not like, you know, oh, we gotta raise, we gotta raise it five dollars, you know, and already use, no, no, it's a small increase. It's, it's amazing. It makes a huge difference, you know, it really gets the trending to where it needs to be and stuff, and I think that's where we're gonna be on the water.
Yeah, part of your presentation will, will touch on, um, how we bill too versus, like, a flat rate versus a flow rate and those types of things.
That's a big thing too that we wanna, that's a, a project that I, I would.
That's something that needs to be investigated.
Flow-based billing. That's part of where the new meters come in the plans. So we get the new meters in there. We measure all that water that goes through there, so then you get billed for.
Basically, people use it, pay it, not spread it.
Flat rates, an easy way of doing it, but it's, it's not really, I have an opinion on that.
People are either underpaying or overpaying, so.
There's a lot of pain in the, in the flipping from one to the other, though.
Lot of pain in that. I was, I'm not ready for that yet, but we'll do it. We're gonna do it if it's.
It's a more accurate way of doing it.
It is. I believe flow-based billing is the way to go for sure.
Any other questions on sewer? Moving on to water.
Okay.
Um, again, just on the summary, uh, revenues are projected to decrease six point three million dollars or fifty-nine point six percent. Labor costs projected to increase almost fifty-six thousand dollars or six percent. Operating costs are projected to increase a hundred and thirty-two thousand or four point three percent. And debt is projected to decrease twenty-eight thousand or forty-three point one percent for an overall increase to fund balance of thirteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars, uh, which is sixty point five million dollars or almost a hundred percent less than twenty twenty-three. Capital costs, which are shown separately, are projected to decrease three hundred and ninety thousand or four point eight percent. On the assumptions, again, these pertain, pertain strictly to water. Uh, they applied for and received a DWSRF, SRF loan at five point four million dollars in twenty twenty-three. Uh, there was a, I might wanna talk about that too, because I know the original amount was five million, one hundred and eighty-five thousand. And they came back and actually said, well, we have extra money here, so we'll give you another two hundred and thirty thousand.
Yeah.
So that's how the number got up to five point four one five million, okay?
That's exactly what happened.
Yep.
So.
Okay. Uh, and again, that was for addressing the PFOS issue within the township, and their, and the funds are gonna be used for extending the water mains along Power View and the Clarkston Park South. The project is scheduled to be started and finished in twenty twenty-four. Uh, also, we are planning another twenty-five percent per unit rate increase in twenty twenty-four from two twenty-five to two fifty per unit, uh, which will help, uh, increase cash reserves on the water side. So moving into revenues, projected to decrease three point seven million or thirty-five point three percent. So there are increases. Uh, ready-to-serve charge up twenty-eight thousand dollars or four point two percent. That's due to new meters in the system that need to be built. Usage up two hundred and eighty-one thousand or eleven point one percent due to the twenty-five percent per unit rate increase. Interest income and market value adjustments up seventy-two thousand or three hundred and sixty-eight percent due to the most recent investment strategy laid out to the board in August. And there were five other revenue increases that amounted to just under five thousand dollars. On the decrease side, other federal grants, here's your ARPA money. Um, one point, almost three million dollars or a hundred percent coming down uh, because we had projects, the Pine Knob Water Main Extension, uh, the balance of that project, eight hundred and forty-three thousand, that was finished in twenty twenty-three. And then we had the water main extension into Clintonwood Park, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That never happened this year. Probably won't happen with these funds at this point. It's still in the, it's still on the radar, but again, those funds have probably been reallocated towards possibly the fuel farm that we have, uh, planned also in the spring of twenty-four. Uh, state grants coming down five point three million dollars. Again, this is the DWSRF grant for extending water mains down Power View. Again, we expected this to happen this year and have all the draws and receive this money. Again, this is a budgeting thing, uh, so we just left it in twenty-three and we'll pull it forward uh, when we understand everything that has been spent and we know what to pull forward, uh, in twenty-four so that the project can basically be finished, okay? Uh, tap-in fees down six thousand dollars or five point four percent, and again, due to six less taps planned in twenty-four compared to twenty-three. Capital charge, uh, down fifteen thousand, six or five point four percent due to the same reason, six fewer hookups planned in twenty-four compared to twenty-three. Hydrant rental down thirty-seven thousand or a hundred percent, and this is due to eliminating the charge to fire based on these being a DPW asset required by the state. And technically, fire doesn't use all the hydrants in a given year. Fire is billed for water usage when they do use a hydrant. Reimbursement insurance down twenty-five thousand or seventy-one point five percent due to monies received in twenty-three for a van that was totaled along with record charges and damage done to the Royal St. George Pump House. Uh, are not expected to recur in twenty-four.
That.
It must be.
That or not.
That or not, it's not that. Then there was one other decrease for about thirteen hundred dollars. Uh, moving into labor and benefits, uh, increase of just under fifty-six thousand or six percent. Again, full-time wages are twenty-seven, twenty-seven thousand of that, uh, or four point six percent. That is broken down between normal four percent wage and step increases of about twenty-two thousand. Additional vacation payouts, uh, just under seven hundred, and additional year-end accrual for about forty-six hundred. Pension expense, DC four oh one eight is increasing sixty-seven hundred thousand or fourteen point four percent. That's again, due to the wage step increases mentioned above. Health insurance premiums increasing twenty thousand dollars or fourteen point seven percent. That's just due to a change in personnel along with adding a janitorial position. And there were six other increases that amount to about seventy-one, almost seventy-two hundred dollars. On the decrease side, nothing substantial, just one decrease. It's about thirty-six hundred dollars. Moving into operating debt costs, they're projected to increase a hundred and three thousand or three point three percent. So on the e, increase side here, there's a number of different things. We have water sample testing up five thousand dollars or thirteen point five percent due to budget adjustments that moved five thousand dollars out, so this basically is just re-establishing the original budget. Uh, electric pump houses up twenty thousand dollars or six point one percent due to increased rates from DTE. Building and grounds maintenance up seventy-two thousand or two hundred and forty-eight percent. There's a number of adds and subtracts on this one. Uh, additional thirty-five thousand for removal of underground water tank, or fuel tanks. Additional fifty thousand for removal of the arch at the Pine Knob Pump House. Additional eighty-five hundred for general maintenance due to price increases. And we have a subtraction of fifteen thousand for budget adjustments done in twenty-three to cover excessive maintenance. And then subtract a fifty-seven hundred for janitorial services that were eliminated due to hiring for the custodian. Equipment repairs and maintenance, water mains, uh, increasing thirteen thousand five or thirty-seven percent. This is due to an addition of fifteen thousand added for possible water main breaks. Depreciation up forty-three thousand or two point. Depreciation up forty-three thousand or two point six percent, again, based on the projects that we had talked about in the CIP. Equipment meters up six thousand dollars or thirteen point six percent based on the expected new builds. And there were twelve other increases amounting to about fifteen thousand dollars. On the decrease side, contractual services down seven thousand or one point nine percent. There's again, some additions and subtractions that make up that number. On the addition side, we're adding a hundred and fifty thousand in 24 for the CDSMI investigation required by Eagle. I don't know if you want to say something about that because I have no idea what that is.
Due to Flint, and that is verification of the service line for every home. It is due by the end of 2025. We have to verify, visually verify, the pipe material on one inlet side of the curb box on somebody's house and on the other side and verify what the pipe material is on the inside. This is required by the state and making every community in the state a machine do it. We're gonna have to do just under four hundred as out of the sixty-two hundred that we have. And it's expensive.
You have to get in their house?
Yes.
Who's handling all that logistically? You guys do?
We're not. I mean, that's, I have to, I have to contract that out. There's just no way that we can do that. We, we will help facilitate that, you know, maybe with some scheduling, but we're not going to be doing that.
So you're looking for plastic pipe or copper pipe to see which is going in?
Lead service lines is what they want. There's none in independence, which is a wonderful thing. But it doesn't matter. You have to visually verify a random, we have just under four hundred. So you have to dig up the water main or the curb box in the yard. What is it on this side, the water main side? What pipe material is on the house side and what is it coming into the house?
And then we have to re-vegetate and everything?
Record.
No, I mean, the, like, we, if you're gonna dig up a curb box five feet underground, it's gonna put a big hole in someone's front yard. Or what, do we get to pick the four hundred?
Randomly selected. So we have to be a good representative township. We're gonna say, we're gonna test these and they're gonna go, no, I want you to test more over here or something.
And the reason I ask that is that there's a lot of curb boxes that are buried in concrete.
That's right.
So if we, we don't want to pick those.
No, we're gonna.
But it's random.
Well, I, that's why I'm trying to figure out how random works.
We will do our best to keep those out.
Okay.
Because, yeah, that's.
Must the sidewalk needs repaired or something?
A couple of them.
There are in driveways, I mean, there are.
Um, is this a, is this a new requirement by Eagle? Okay.
It's a direct result of Flint water prices.
Okay. And having a lead service line in and of itself is, is not a detriment to the homeowner if the water, of course, is treated properly. And there's even, there's even technology out there, chemicals out there that can, in effect, oversimplify, crystallize the lead in a, in a way that it becomes a hardened crystal surface. No matter what flows through it, it's not scraping the lead and delivering that to the faucet.
That's correct. Ortho-phosphate is what they use to treat water on the copious side of the guy. We don't have, we haven't identified any here, which is great. But we still, a public water supply and we follow a re-sacred water act. This is a, it's a one and done thing.
Okay.
But it's your final report. We had to do a preliminary report that we did two years ago or last year and then you have to verify and have this done by end of next year. So it will be done next year. It will be done.
Okay. All right.
Okay, moving on, an additional sixty thousand was put into 2024 for the Water Master Plan. Two hundred thousand subtracted in 24 due to adding those dollars in 23 for the PFAS investigation. And again, that won't recur in 24. We subtracted fifteen thousand for storage tank inspections in 23 that won't recur in 24. And subtracted two thousand from the 24 budget for cathodic protection of elevated storage tanks. Number two, contractual services, wellhead protection, down ten thousand dollars or fifty percent. And this is simply due to not receiving a matching grant in 24. We will reapply for that grant in 2025. Professional development, down five thousand or thirty-three point eight percent due to an additional five thousand needed in 23 for training. That won't recur in 24. Small equipment down eleven thousand or forty-seven point one percent due to replacing six computers in 23 versus one in 24. Interest, long-term debt down twenty-eight thousand or forty-three point four percent, again, due to paying down principal annually, which generates less interest expense. And there were five other decreases totaling just under ten thousand dollars. Capital costs projected to decrease three hundred and ninety thousand or four point eight percent. Again, we have increases, building improvements, DPW building up to ten. Again, for basically just budgeting more in 24 when compared to 23. And again, we went through all those projects. Distribution system improvements up seven hundred and eighty-six thousand or thirteen point four percent venue. And let's see here, equipment is decreasing ninety-four thousand, five hundred or forty point three percent. There's a couple of different items here. Additional fifty-two thousand, five seventy-four in 23 for giving us a total of ninety-seven thousand for the portable generator that won't recur in 24. We had an additional three thousand, ninety dollars in 24, which is the difference between a replacement van in 23 versus a new all-wheel drive van in 24. Distribution system improvements, this is your ARPA piece again. And that's basically the Pine Knob Water Main Extension finishing up in 23. And then the reallocation of the Water Main Extension into Clintonwood Park. Fund balance, projected to decrease almost six point five ninety dollars or almost a hundred percent. Couple of different items here again, the fiscal 24 plan surplus is thirteen thousand, seven. The projected 2023 fund balance is thirty-eight million, five. And that's split down between twenty-six million, five for restricted and eleven, almost twelve million dollars in unrestricted, which again is the cash piece. We're projecting in 2026 fund balance to increase up to forty-seven million. And that again, is split between restricted at forty point seven million and unrestricted at six point three million. Cash is decreasing primarily due to large capital purchases offset by the twenty-five cent rate increase. And just so you're understanding, the, the rate increase would basically decrease. If we did not do this rate increase, cash would actually come in at the five point five million instead of the six point, almost four. So that's the impact that it has on our cash, which is what we want, yeah, which is what we want.
Yeah.
So, and that finishes up the water fund. Are there any questions on that particular fund?
I just have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Since I want to get, understand this. The pump house, what are we, how are we eliminating the arch of the pump house?
Yes, you know, are you familiar with the arch of the Pine Knob Wellhouse?
It's on the way to the golf course, right?
Yep.
Then yes, I'm familiar with it.
It's been blasted, it's been hit.
A dozen times.
A dozen times.
I know.
And it's expensive to repair. So we're gonna eliminate the arch.
Are you gonna take just everything off the building and just leave it as a pump house, everything to the right?
If you're driving up in there, everything to the left will stay.
Right. And just everything else is gonna go just re-drive at the outside of it and be done with it?
We're gonna, we're gonna make it look, you know, stuck, oh, you know.
Again, leave a little bit like on left and right just to, as a, like a
Sure.
Kind of entry point or whatever?
Yeah, you know, you could still, you know, whatever, we haven't come with the design. We know we gotta get rid of the arch because it just keeps getting hit two, three times a year.
Yeah, and the roof is expensive on it and everything else to just keep, for an aesthetical feature in some other neighborhood, there's a lot to keep absorbing.
And if we get PFAS money, we might put that pump house back in service and filtration.
Oh, and that's the one we're not using.
That's been off for two thousand eight, I think that, because it's high arsenic there. But arsenic's easy to filter and you can send it down the sewer and no worries there. That's a possibility. But we have that on our CIP plan and we pushed that up twenty-seven or twenty-eight or something. And we have like two and a half million dollars in our CIP for Pine Knob Wellhouse we have. That's what that is.
Can I just ask you a quick question? I found this interesting that the fire department pays for the water to put out fires?
Yes.
And where does, where do they get the money to pay for it?
It's just use insurance companies, you know? If there's a structural fire or something like that, we have to account for water usage and we do.
So we build the residence insurance company to pay for the water to put out the fire?
The insurance, you know, it's same with, you hit a street light with your car. You know, we get the police report and then we turn in clerk's office. We go after insurance companies for, you know, people's automobile insurance for hitting the street light for repairs. We do the same thing for.
And when is the next twenty-five cent increase going into effect for the water?
January one, or first, do you do January one?
Yeah, it'll be first billing.
It'll be first billing.
Yeah, about mid-January.
Mid-January.
And isn't one unit rate like seven hundred gallons or something?
Yes, seven hundred and forty-eight gallons.
So they're paying an additional twenty-five cent for seven hundred and forty-eight gallons?
Right now, we pay two dollars and twenty-five cents for a hundred units, okay?
Okay.
Okay, so one unit is seven point four eight gallons or a hundred units is seven hundred and forty-eight gallons. So they're gonna pay two dollars and fifty cents for seven hundred and forty-eight gallons.
Okay.
Of water.
And we're gonna bump that, but that generated almost three hundred grand when we increased this year. I mean, that's a big amount to get us out of the red.
Small increases like that help. And we got, like Rick mentioned, you know, we've got to talk sewer sooner than later. We'll have to do that because we're just getting clobbered by entities that, you know, we have no control over, you know, what they do. And everything else is going to utility costs.
I was gonna say that all of your normal operating costs are continuing to go up and then we're just absorbing it and it's just, you can't keep doing that.
Right.
You know, it doesn't make business sense.
We gotta cover our costs.
Yeah, just out of curiosity, what is the average consumption per month? So you got seven forty-eight is ten units?
Yeah, so we build quarterly. So on average, eighteen to twenty-five units, Paul?
Yeah.
Is that really accurate? Eighteen to twenty-five units is per typical, you know, we have some big time water users. And then waterside, our waters are fairly expensive. It's a value, it's a great value. Go buy a bottle of water and then go, seven hundred and forty-eight gallons for this one bottle of the same.
Okay.
Okay, moving on, we have two smaller funds here yet. The Sashawal Drain Maintenance Fund. The Sashawal Maintenance Drain, Maintenance, actually, we moved on to page twenty. I'm sorry, I'm here, I'm on the twenty-four page packet here. So the Sashawal Drain Maintenance Fund has been established to account for maintenance and improvement costs incurred in accordance with the Asset Management Plan. Revenue for the improvements and maintenance of the drain will be generated via user fee. It will be determined at a future date in accordance with Chapter fourteen of the Code of Ordinances. For Section fourteen dash fifty-nine, rates may be modified in the reasonable exercise of discretion by the Township Board in accordance with the Board's determination of the existing and reasonably anticipated costs of operating and maintaining the system, including amounts set aside for repairs and replacements reasonably anticipated to be needed in the future. Initially, the Sashawal Drain Maintenance Fund will be used, will use fund balance, existing fund balance after the closeout of the Sashawal Regional Drain Special Assessment Fund with the improvement and maintenance costs. So what we have here, again, we're, we're gonna just do a real quick, quick summary here. Revenues projected to increase a hundred and seventy bucks, twenty point five percent. Operating costs projected to decrease fifty-eight thousand or sixty-two point one compared to twenty-three. And our overall reduction to fund balance came in about thirty-four thousand, five hundred, which is fifty-eight thousand, four hundred or sixty-two point nine percent more than 2023. Assumptions used to prepare this budget, follow the Asset Management Plan for 24, 25 and 26. Continue budgeting for legal due to legal issues associated with the drain. So there's very little activity as far as revenues go. There's really no, nothing significant. There's one increase of about fifteen hundred dollars and nothing on expenditure side. Expenditures, we're following, again, we're following the plan. Contractual services projected to decrease about fifty-seven thousand due to additional work required in 23, not expected to occur in 24. What basically, what this comes down to is this fund is getting real low on, on money. And I mean, if you actually look at the operating statement itself, which is on page twenty-two, it shows everything in red. Well, that's not a completely true story only from the standpoint that if you look at the 2023 activity, you can see that we're about thirty thousand dollars under budget at this point as far as what we were supposed to spend. So right now, we're looking at a budget that's supposed to end with like a ninety-two thousand dollar deficit. That's probably not going to happen. It's probably gonna be about thirty thousand dollars or so better than that. So going into, and that's important because going into 24, that eighteen thousand that there is probably being closer to forty-five thousand. So again, if we sleep with our plan and, and spend the thirty-five thousand, we're gonna be down closer to ten thousand dollars at the end of 2024. That's not enough to get us through 2025. So we need to do something probably starting in 2024 to start assessing people for this drainage campaign. It needs to be done now. We have been brought to the board. And we fixed it all up. We spent a lot of money. We used the fund balance that was there over the last five years or so. And we've done all the repairs we can, but it's not to the point now where the fund has just been depleted.
Is that something that Sashawal DDA should be looking at? Because they see it to be the contributors on, other businesses on Sashawal that are, that would have to contribute to that, right?
They have stormwater from their business, so we know they need to assess. We need to recoup the funds.
I'm just saying, every, every business on Sashawal or in the Sashawal corridor either paid money to retain their own water or they bought a part of the Sashawal drain to, to utilize that, right? So, so the people that are signed up to utilize it are, they're the ones that are gonna pay into it then, right?
Yeah, because we, like Rick said, we've lived on the, you know, when we built it, you know, there was a big assessment. And our, and there was a surplus and we just been living on that for maintenance.
It was around half a million dollars, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was five, six hundred thousand that was in there. There's just been no, you know, Board doesn't want, didn't want to entertain that, you know, an assessment at that time. So we'll burn down the reserve, so keep it where it came from and we have.
Treshor Brown?
The existing district, is it still active in there? We're just not assessing?
Correct.
Right, so the district's already sat.
Right.
Right. So we can't add anybody new to it, whoever's in it, and we just have to decide whether or not we want to make the assessment and put it on the bills.
Right, well, there is some vacant parcels that aren't signed up to, to be in it right now, right?
Well, there's some, a lot's changed since the original assessment that was set up. I mean, I, I don't think Bridgewater Apartments was there, you know, that's with you when they built it. Well, that's, they have a lot that goes in, contributes. So when we did the capital, Asset Management Plan, I had HRC at the time, they said, give us a, I want to list all the properties at that time that benefit from the strain. Because that would be our assessing, yes. That those are the ones we have to assess. And the formula would be, how much do you assess each person, right? And there's different ways, how much coefficient of water runs off. You know, if they have, you know, two hundred thousand square, two hundred thousand square, be a flat surface, like a parking lot, then that's, this much water comes off. There's formulas for all that stuff.
I thought the, I thought those formulas are already part of the agreement though.
I can't answer that.
Okay, well, I'm just saying to me, we should just set up a, maybe a committee to look into that. Because to me, that, that should all have been part of the initial agreement that, you know, who, who's in it and how you're you know, how you're utilizing it.
I know some of the people that were in it then are no longer in it. They sold off their properties and, you know, developers developed other things.
Right, but it's, the property is what's in the, the
Right.
District, not, not the who owns it, so.
But it's also changed.
Right.
The characters. Definitely.
I guess, I guess what I'm getting at, it's not taxpayers that are gonna pay for it. It's, it's gonna be the, the people that own the property in that district, so.
Correct. It's just like the Kelly and the Cranberry Lake Drain and the other one, which is Kelly Cranberry Lake. The county assesses, M-15, county assesses the township.
Yeah.
For, for those every year for maintenance.
Okay, any other questions on that one?
Nope.
We have one more fund here. It's the Downtown Development Authority Fund. This is a brand-new fund established in 2024. We have received basically estimates on the revenue captures from our assessing department. And the budget that was put together is basically spending all of those dollars in all three years. We have set aside money for contractual services, which is basically Carlisle Wharton or some other engineering firm. And a few, a little bit for legal fees. The rest of the funds are all going under equipment or doing whatever projects you guys can do for the funds that are being available there. So there, it's not carrying any kind of a fund balance at this point. Obviously, as we get into it, I'm sure there will be a fund balance that pops up, but because we're not gonna be spending all of it, all the dollars. That's how it was set up initially and then we'll tweak it as we move down the road.
Thank you, Ray.
Are there any other questions?
Nope.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, guys. Communications, a future agenda item, report, report, um, number one, Orklin County Sheriff's Department, October twenty twenty three. Two, Fire Department, August twenty twenty three. Three, Fire Department, September twenty twenty three. Four, uh, we have a residential open space backstory committee, October eleventh, twenty twenty three. Board members comments, I have a comment, I wanna wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving for residents and board members. And anything else?
Same, move to adjourn.
Yeah, move to adjourn, is that okay? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, thank you, guys, good job, thank you, Karen.
You wanna agree?
What? No, good job.